Oh, so you don't have the minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Few places our comments were the increase in the impervious area and then it was the increase in the pervious area. And they seemed to get a little confused and just it was just that was the only part that I'm sure.
Okay.
So I'll just say it. I mean, it's just you have to just sort of just that one little thing.
Okay.
And I know that these people increased impervious, impervious.
Yeah, they did.
But to me, it's you pay the area.
Yeah.
So we could maybe just.
Just paid gas.
Increased payment.
Yeah.
That would make it much easier.
Yeah.
This is harder to read and review than a special firm.
Which on the car path?
The amendment. Yeah, see if it's going home.
Yeah, you know, it's I've got it on the.
I didn't see that. Yeah, it was printed out.
Yeah, it's printed out. And then they're stapled together because I did not communicate through with Katie how when the thing's printed, so she put them all together.
Hi, Alicia. Crisis for my car. Is this gonna be a car key? Well, you know, these supercars don't actually have to have a key for us. So it's missing somewhere in the car.
But at least you can start it, right?
GPS. It's somewhere anybody else can start.
Oh, cool. Welcome to party now?
So I'm doing it so my son can go to dump. Because he hasn't had a car, so you went to dump.
At least you left a file.
Oh, it don't trade out now.
At least it's not at the dump.
Oh, yeah, I don't want to pay for the gas on that.
That's pretty funny.
Oh, jeez, sorry. So guys up there are just saying.
It's out there.
Yeah, but I mean, is it telling you constantly, you know, like, well, if your car is.
Yeah, so.
Where?
Because I got the.
Usually puts it right here.
I got the crunch in the car. Wait, what?
How do we do?
Oh, dear.
Tell ourselves that they're on the cable.
Yeah.
So can we mix them up? I just looked up my time to try to make this straddle.
No, no, I'm talking with me.
I think you just got there.
They argue, but I was thinking we should mix them up. We could.
Do you speak well?
Yeah, every, every meeting.
We'll change them, change them. Do musical chairs with you guys?
You know what? Calm down. And then you have to find your place. Find your place at the table. That's what you're saying.
It just goes the same way. You sit on that side of the table.
I am. You have now this. Spartacus, right? No, we tell the truth.
Searching.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, I got the reference wrong.
That's good though. I am soon.
My key is good.
Due to be replaced next Thursday. Walk-in trap budget surgery once again.
But I know it.
But it's the same guy after Mary.
Oh, my goodness, here are faces I haven't recognized.
We're in the presence of greatness.
I know that.
Talking about.
Hey, there.
Hello.
Hi. Any particular reason we're in more greatness than normal?
So the squish here or? Well, fellow who normally does our setup custodian Dave, he retired, so somebody else took setup tonight.
Oh, this has been changed. Custodian Dave retired.
Custodian Dave. There's no new custodian yet.
Yeah, do you want me to separate?
There have been days where I have to have to do it again.
Because I don't want to straddle it.
Exactly. Whatever you prefer.
Everything's good. Everything's fine. Yeah. I could still throw that. I could still throw that.
Let's move Steve. He's not here.
Is he coming? Is he coming?
Steve is filling. That would just be more of a psych contact.
Dave has advised me to request some new projector in the budget, so.
That's a good idea.
That way it's more.
I have no idea.
Forty by twenty?
So forty six by ten twenty four?
We just need new glasses.
What happens to your projector?
What's that written before? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm keeping my comments.
We put it somewhere else. I don't know.
You can give it to the white people.
Are they looking for projector? Okay. Shouldn't they have all like the nicest stuff though, because they're like new and artful and.
Now the senior.
Oh, okay. All right, we're all here.
That's our copy.
Steve, you need a minute to talk.
I'll speak for him.
Okay, we've reached our appointed hour. The planning board meeting will commence at seven thirty two. And first item on the agenda is public comment. Comments on topics not on the agenda today? Saying none, we'll move to our first item on the agenda, which is the three fifty eight Costford Road. Josiah Smith Tavern site plan approval.
Good evening, planning board. My name's Adrian Diskey. I'm representative for the Friends of the Josiah Smith Tavern. We are five oh one C three and we responded to a proposal for the selectmen for this project. We're looking for CPC funds in twelve town meeting. The property is under, we have four hundred and sixty three years left to go on the deed restriction. And that has tampered many things that we've done on this project over the years, getting it to this point. The program is a shell space for a hundred and five seat restaurant. It's a community room on the second floor for the use of the community for forty six people. And then office space for the nonprofits, Weston Historical Society, Women's Community League and Forest and Trail. And we are looking for base building only. The restaurateur will do everything, his own build out in the shell space. And at that point, we will be back to you again to look at that, the ramifications of that. But shouldn't, they're not very much on the outside. The board of selectmen, the historic commission and the CPC are co-sponsors. Their board of selectmen is the owner of the building and all of that. The main work on the building is all building systems. None of them are legal right now. The building is empty. Structural ADA compliance, electrical plumbing, HVAC, fire protection, septic, parking and site work. And a small addition in the back for the elevator, fire stairs, ADA bathrooms, rear entry. And mechanical areas, again, all work by the restaurateur in the shell space. I'm going to introduce Rob Gemma, who will do the civil and also Weston Worth will do landscape architecture. And Daniel from Baker Wall, who's the architect, he'll be here shortly. Thank you.
Hi, for the record, I'm Rob Gemma from Metro West Engineering. Start off by saying I think I've worked inside maybe twenty, twenty-five years. I've worked on multiple different proposals and I'm mildly optimistic that this will be the last time I actually work on it.
Four hundred and sixty-three years from now.
I mean, I've been on a new.
Been in the newity.
Yeah, I've been in the newity, so in some respects it's been good. Obviously, the parcel lies on Boston Post Road, which is at the top of the sheet. And then the bypass road, Route twenty, is down at the bottom of the sheet. The school street is over on the right. This is the main Josiah Smith Tavern and that's the connector barn. And the new library is here. Saint Julius Church is over here. Existing conditions, you know, features two prominent isolated wetlands that they don't discharge offsite. So they're wetlands onsite. The old playground for the children's playground is in this location. And that's has since been relocated. I guess, just the colored one, I was hoping to send you didn't consider. I will put it up here, but I can refer to this one. And obviously, um. Yeah. I'll just put that up. Just the darker green on that board kind of represents areas that are, that are heavily wooded. Maybe second or third generation growth. The lighter green areas are areas that have been cleared in the recent past, although there's been some regrowth in this area. But it's basically, this is mostly shrub and weeds and things like that. And then there's an old causeway that actually runs between these two wetlands that's shown right there. It's lined by stone walls. I think that probably dates back to when there was some agricultural uses here, whether it was for horses or cattle to get to the. Well, I imagine we're probably watering holes back, back in the day. Site six point six one acres. The topography all slopes from the street towards, towards the two wetlands. All the drainage existing conditions is self-contained on the site. Nothing discharges offsite. The tavern itself has, most of it has gutters and downspouts, not all of it. But it just discharges on the ground and runs over land into the wetlands. The tavern has what we believe is an old cesspool out there that we don't know exactly where it is. But certainly it doesn't have much for a septic system. And the site presently has twelve thousand square feet of impervious area. And one other thing that's just kind of interesting, well, there's a prominent ledge outcrop here. And another prominent ledge outcrop there along the street. And if we drew a line roughly from that ledge outcrop down to this old causeway. The soils to the west of that line, or actually great soils, they're sandy, deep, well-drained soils down ten, twelve feet. And if we went to the east of that line, we have glacial, hard, compact glacial tills with a perched water table of three or four feet. And very shallow soils to ledge and bedrock. So there's a clear dividing line here between the more workable soils and the porous soils in the site. So this shows the proposed site plan. This is the addition that Adrian spoke of here where the ADA bathrooms and the elevator shaft will be in this location. I think in order to repurpose the building, you know, for the restaurant and meeting space. Obviously, one of the primary things that needed to be addressed was off-street parking. And I will say that the design team and the Josiah Smith working group spent an awful lot of time in trying to configure the most least impactful parking design in terms of access, egress, access on the, or impacts on the abutters. And there were a lot of competing constraints going on. We were trying to avoid major alteration to this ledge outcrop and this ledge outcrop. We didn't want to place this entrance too close to Saint Julius Church. We needed to provide adequate access within the parking lot for circulation and importantly, fire department and emergency equipment. We need to keep the grades suitable so that we could have ADA compliant spaces here and not have too steep of a driveway. And as this driveway moves east, the grades get more difficult to work. So this was about as far east as we could push it and still make grading work and keep the grades within ADA compliance. We also wanted an entrance that was close enough to the tavern that felt like it belonged to the tavern and not just a generally missable parking lot, which it might feel if, if the entrance was further to the west. So we spent a lot of time and we came up with quite a few different renditions of the parking lot before we finally got something that we all thought was, was workable. The parking demand is based on a hundred and five seat restaurant, a forty-nine seat community room and about fifteen hundred square feet of general office space that will be within the building. So the zoning analysis determined that we need fifty-five spaces under the zoning by law. What we provided on site is, is forty-two standard spaces and two ADA spaces right there for a total of forty-four. With the remaining thirteen spaces being determined that they'd be available spaces on Boston Post Road and in the general area. And I had met with John Field on that and he felt comfortable with that parking analysis from a zoning compliance point of view. So that, that's where the total parking space has come. In terms of how the overall facility works. The nuts and bolts of the, you know, the infrastructure for the building that's going to support the restaurant and that sort of thing is all tucked in behind the building, so it's not, not visible. That would include all the treatment components for the sewage disposal system, as well as there's a pad here for a future generator for, for the restaurant use. There were loading docks in here that you can see are tucked behind the building, so you can't see the loading facilities. The dumpster location is also tucked behind the building in this location, so the dumpsters, which will also be fenced. But it's for the most part, it's out of sight for both the building and patrons coming from the parking lot. I'll let Wes go through kind of the pedestrian circulation and how the, the access to the building works. But basically, it's, you know, this is the sidewalk from the parking lot brings us around to the front where there's an ADA compliant access over the, the old porch, which, which will be modified a bit. And then the main entrance to the building is right here. The space in front is considered, is, you know, planned to be gathering space, possibly some outdoor tables. But, but walk around the area into the restaurant as people meet, meet up with their parties and wait to get into the building. The, the site itself, you know, it all slopes this way. So the parking lot's graded at five percent, which is workable. What we've done is to make the parking lot work and the needed infrastructure behind the building. We do have a retaining wall that's going from here to here. We've also spent quite a bit of time working on that retaining wall. And in the various renditions of the plan, we were able to cut off about sixty-five linear feet of that wall. It's now about two hundred and twenty feet long. At one point, it approached three hundred feet long. And at one point, it was as tall as thirteen feet. And now, I think the exposed face of the wall, which is on the rear side, is only about eight to nine feet. And we've been able to place fill behind the wall, so there'll be a slope behind it and, and a lot of ways to do some magic with the landscaping and that sort of thing behind the wall. So and of course, you won't see the wall from the front. And the reason I brought the aerial is to just demonstrate. And I didn't send this to be my, but that's an aerial of the site. Again, the tavern being here, the library being here. And what I've done is I've kind of taped on a piece of paper roughly where the wall and the limited clearing is, just to show you the offset from the bypass road, which is, from the bypass road is, if you could see the back of the wall, that's where you need to see it from. That distance is about four hundred feet through a densely wooded wetland swamp and tick-infested zone that no one ever wants to walk through. So, and then again, and the walls now, it's really not all that tall and it'll be landscaped behind the wall too. So, so it will be well-hidden. Going back to the, to the site plan. Again, one of the critical components aside from parking was certainly the sewage disposal system. It serves the restaurant primarily, but also the office and the gathering space. And we took a conservative approach to the septic system in that we were providing advanced treatment for the septic system, which isn't required under, under Title V of the Board of Health Regulation. But we want to make sure, because the, the restaurant discharges what we call a high BOD wastewater. I mean, the high strength wastewater compared to what you would discharge in your ordinary septic tank at home. And the high strength wastewater tends to wear out leaching fields very fast. So we don't want to be in a position where in, in ten years, the leaching field fails. Which is why there are these two circular units here, which are called bioclear units. Those are the same unit that actually services the town hall. And there's one across the street in the little park, kind of looks like a little orange mushroom near the top of the stairs. So you probably barely notice it unless you're actually looking for it, because there's some shrub right around it. So that, that's what those are. And then from there, it flows down to a pump chamber. And then this is the leaching field. The leaching field itself is what you call the pressure dose system. So it's almost like a lawn irrigation system in that it pumps the effluent evenly over the entire field, which also aids in the longevity of the field. And, you know, I've worked with Wes to design this field so that we can, we've got some protection. So that he's actually planning and he'll go through the details of it, a wildflower garden over it, some other features. So, so we're certainly hoping that the, that the leaching field not only becomes forgotten, but becomes a visual.
One of the most pleasant parts of the site.
Right. And then for stormwater, as I mentioned, all the water on this site actually goes into these isolated wetlands. And nothing leaves the site. But what we're doing with, with the drainers now is wherever there were downspouts on the building, which is probably seventy, seventy-five percent of it. We're picking up the downspouts, providing plenty of drainage in the, in the front area because of the use of it as a gathering space. Of course, we're picking up the parking lot drainage. We're treating that stormwater, we're appropriate through a, a storm scepter type system. And then we're discharging it into a rain garden bio-retention area in, in this location. And again, we're hoping that that, that becomes also a feature of the site that can be used to kind of educate the public and perhaps, you know, high school kids and grade school kids on the proper way to manage and, and deal with stormwater. So we hope that this is going to be a plus as well. And it won't be, shouldn't be, you know, like a, I don't want to use the word at all detention or retention bond. That's not, not what it is. If you get a typical one-inch scope rainfall in a, on a sun reathing or something. This will pond to a depth of about an inch and a half of water. So, you know, obviously for a larger storm event, a ten-year storm, you get more water in it. But for the typical flush from the parking lot that you get, you won't see water in there for, you know, more than probably six or twelve hours. And it'll only be an inch or two deep. So again, we, we hope that that will be a benefit of the site and, and something that's attractive rather than places that we collect shopping carts and beer cans. Could be both.
Too many mosquitoes up there. Beer cans to be in.
We've, we've also provided out of necessity, a place for a future electrical switch for whatever that, that might require. We've been told that, that bill, the power company will need one there. But the details of that aren't known yet, so we've provided space adjacent to the parking lot for, for that as well. And again, it's kind of behind the building and otherwise it would have been located on somewhere along the street frontage and it could have been an ice sword along the street. Just in terms of some of the other things that we typically talk about the planning board. Project has eleven thousand square feet of impervious now. We're adding twenty-one thousand square feet principally, obviously because of the parking lot, but also some of the paving in front and the addition. So we'll have a total of thirty-three thousand square feet of impervious area on the site when we're complete. It'll all stormwater retained on the site. Other project impacts, overall, the project will disturb about one point nine acres of land in total. It, it's mostly a fill site because of the wall and the area impact. We're going to need about three thousand cubic yards of material to be imported to the site to, to complete all the work. You know, we do anticipate that in the front, along here, at the entrance and along here, that we probably will encounter some ledge. We don't have that quantified, because we don't have boarings that go down in that particular location to quantify all the ledge. But I would estimate at this point, we're probably, you know, looking at four or five hundred jobs of ledge. There's several hundred jobs of ledge in that area. But it's, it's unavoidable. And I think that's transformer. Location of the transformer. What's that?
Transformer.
I just mentioned the switch path.
Yeah, but the transformer to the building?
To the building.
That's going to be under what?
That's.
That's the purpose of ever so, that's over here.
Yeah.
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 Next to the library feeding that one.
Right. Right, we wanted to complement all the air conditioning units and things like that there at the libraries. So we kind of get them all in the same location.
So that's actually in the yard of the library or it's on the?
No, it'll be on this side of the building. In that, that corner.
It's actually the same transformer as, as the old libraries.
Okay.
It's a joint, joint effort. And then the switch box, what it was going to be right in here, because that's ever so. And if you don't give him something now, they'll drop it wherever they feel like it. Right now, it's on a pole. I don't want to talk about the details, but it's highly unsafe.
So if there are any civil engineering questions I can answer now, or we can just go into Wes's and answer all the questions?
I've got some questions stacked up. I'm guessing other people do too.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm going to just ask a few questions here, just to make sure the parking that was considered for the street parking. That considered the new town center plan, right?
Yes.
He does need things very great.
And the plans that are shown on the board reflect the improvements to the town center.
But the numbers, the equations you used, they included the parking for the new town center. The parking that's available for the new town center.
Yeah, well, it, the thirteen offsite spaces basically consider parking, you know, in the general proximity of the site. Not necessarily directly in front of the site.
Right, great. Do we have any bicycle parking?
Uh.
Please say yeah.
Yes.
Even if there's none, just say it.
No, Wesley, I don't have that.
Okay, that's great. Where is it? Can you show?
It's a little.
It is right there.
Right there.
Okay, so it serves all three.
Yes, it's well located.
That's perfect. Is it, is there any EV parking, charging?
We don't have any electrical stations at this point.
Would that be a crazy idea to consider for future expansion or?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Going to be the future building managers. We could get some of that solar credits that the town's doing, because we're going to have to pay for the electricity in half the building. But I think it's a really good idea, because more and more people are into that.
So is there solar plans for this?
No, I'm talking about, no, the store going, they would not allow that. But I'm talking about solar, we're setting up solar places in the town, like the big one next to, you know. And we're getting credits for that, so.
When you say solar places, I'm not sure what you mean.
Um, there's this, what do you call it? Right next to the transfer station, it's a.
Solar array.
Solar, it's an array, yeah. But I'm looking for credits, because we have to pay for the electricity in the building.
I understand.
So.
But just to go back to my question.
No, maybe the restaurant.
Would it be hard to add electric charging to the parking as it is, or is that?
It wouldn't be hard. We'd have to provide the infrastructure for it in terms of.
We should, we should provide conduit now, that's for the.
That's what Leslie was always talking about.
Right, and the conduit would cheap now.
Yeah, that sounds good. And bringing up conduit, you like.
Yes, they get a couple of things, right.
Can I ask one question on that?
Sure.
Generally, the electric vehicle charge stations are dedicated to. And if we have sort of a limited number of spaces here, are you going to then, you know, carve out four or five spaces for EVs only to be at? Or how's that going to work, or are we going to?
We're just talking about it now.
We're just talking about it. I mean, I assume that your group has advice on that. This is sidelined. No, probably you.
I wasn't sure you didn't remember.
Sustainability.
And one of my liaison is what you're asking.
Exactly, the sustainability.
Why don't you give us some suggestions or something?
All right, I'll go sustainably, yes. And also, just because it's like anything else, just because you have EV, you have a charging station, doesn't mean that somebody else can't park there.
Right.
There's not a reason.
They're not explicit. Sometimes they say.
This is something to discuss. I think the point is we'd like the ability to do it inexpensively.
Exactly, yeah.
So the point is, let's provide conduit now.
Yeah, I think there's nothing wrong with having a conduit there.
Big mansion.
Yeah, it's a mentality, right.
Right, and as more people have EVs, maybe it would be realistic.
Could be.
And just a curiosity question, in this two-phase treatment of waste, in the first phase, is waste taken offsite or something? Is that what happens?
Yeah, well, sanitary.
Yeah, exactly, right.
No, first phase is.
What happened in the first phase? It's not taken away?
No, generally with, well, eventually, it goes into a big septic tank.
Okay, got it.
So settling tank where the solids settle out. And then from the solids, from there, to get clarified liquid, it goes into these bioclear units, which are, which are what are known as trickle-down filters.
Right, yeah.
And then it goes to the leaching field. But so it's an added component to a standard septic system.
It also has a grease trap, correct?
It has a grease trap in the kitchen.
Because that, that has to be functioned regularly, so clean.
Quarterly.
Right, yeah.
That has to be pumped every three months, assuming the restaurant's.
We have that in the conform to do that, because we do not want that to fail.
So with all of this, tell us again, what they, as opposed to maybe going ten years, how long do you think this will get with all of this extra care attention?
Well, the hope is certainly in excess of thirty years.
And what happens, happening currently?
Well, because like all things that, that live. They die eventually. Well, because like all things that live, they die eventually. But to say whether it'll die at thirty or sixty is pretty speculative at this point and some of that also relies on how well it's maintained and that sort of thing. And also, you know, there's different types of restaurants. I mean, some restaurants are very light on what we call fats, you know, oil and grease and that sort of thing. Others are heavy on it.
This would be far more capable.
So the use, you know, the use is a function.
These are restaurant, no fats, right?
No fat, whatever you call it.
Because all the grease trapped.
It's all tofu.
My next question for Adrian is, could you give us a context of the pedestrian traffic? Like in the new town center, where will people be approaching the restaurant?
People will be approaching the restaurant by car. They would come in here and then they would come out, come right over to here and then get across. Wes is going to show his plan. The restaurant entry is right in the front where you see the barn right now.
Right.
And then handicap or ADA requirement is right along here and this will take you up into the building where the elevator is if you're an AD person. You'd get up to the second floor in what's called the ballroom now, the community room, and there's a ceremonial stair in the front. You could go up that way or you could go right over to the restaurant.
Right.
And if you were walking, you, the sky's the limit. Or if you're coming from the Art Innovation Center, you can get right over across and Wes is going to get into.
Tom Green.
Or the Tom Green right across.
Right.
Crosswalks.
And there's crosswalks.
He showed the crosswalks.
And if you're bicycling, then you come up to where that bike thing is and then.
So we certainly have connectivity planned out to the rest of the destination of the town center.
There's more connectivity in a study that's being done to unify these two in detail. That's coming next after this gets.
I'm interested that there's a sort of a subcommittee of people formed to look at the JST site, the old library site and the town center site coordinated to get, we've been working on that for about a year, we're sort of about to wrap it up, we're, you know, but we've been trying to integrate the two site plans together so that it doesn't look like these are two completely isolated, separate buildings.
You can be innovative and then eat.
Mm-hmm, that's the idea.
Make you hungry.
They can be.
Pigs crossed.
Yeah, being here and then go over into the way at the center and do, I don't know, a gallery opening or all kinds of things. There's a lot, this is meant to be symbiotic site plan or?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you cater from the restaurant into the old library?
Um, yes.
Oh, that would be good.
That's a possibility. That's one of the, the restaurant people that we've been talking to will love to be able to do that, to come over here. There is a warm-up and plating pantry in there, but not a cooking pantry, so it would be very easy to bring stuff over.
Did they cater to planning board meetings?
Actually, only the best.
You have a very good point. A planning board meeting could be in the community room and then the food upstairs has a plating pantry right there.
Approved.
Approved now!
Olive sage.
Somebody here, anyone that didn't get dinner.
I quit too soon.
If you're presenting and you didn't get dinner or EMI didn't get dinner, there'd be something you would go with. Years ago, Susan used to break that.
Tell my side question.
About twenty years ago or something, so that would be a good tradition.
Anybody else?
I just had one question. I just wanted to note the composition of the retaining wall was and.
It's going to be a modular block wall as most cost effective.
So not just, not just poured concrete with forms.
Right, no, it'll be modular block built with like those.
Go ahead.
Steve?
Go ahead.
Okay, I've got a couple. If I'm reading the white line correctly, it goes behind the peace garden and the leaching field.
That's not all wall, that's a bit clearer.
Oh, okay, that makes it.
The wall ends right here.
Okay, because I was wondering why we needed to do that as in what now?
So this is wall. No, I just wanted everyone to have a sense of how much of the site was remaining, dead from vegetation.
Have you gone to Khan Khan already as far as where the wetlands?
Yes, that's all been wonderful.
And it's all right for you guys to dump your clean treatment water into the wetlands? That's what I heard about?
We're not dumping it into the wetlands.
Okay, I thought I heard that. Where is it going?
No, what, you heard what's, right now it all goes in there, but it's all going into a rain garden.
Right now they're daylighting right into the wetlands. That's why nobody's in the building now.
Yeah, my plan would show that.
Um, let me see. Do you ever consider any outdoor sitting or events or anything like that?
Yes.
So that's coming up in the next chapter. All right. And as far as recycling of restaurant waste, I know you don't know what kind of restaurants yet and how much they're going to produce, but have you made any sort of concession for an extra parking space or something for separation of waste?
I think there's probably enough room in where we have the dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, the dumpster is a nice thriving area.
Yes, it's quite large. Dumpster area is about, what, twenty by twenty? Right, so there's sufficient space to have two containers.
So you have two dumpsters in there, so it wouldn't be single stream, it'd be mixed stream and the other would be pure waste.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm not saying it's wrong.
I think that's a negotiation between the restaurant owner and their waste management company.
Yeah, all right. Want to be careful around here because of the raccoons and things like that because you can, coyotes, you can get big surprises. Who's separating what at night?
That's why you have lights and large waiters, right? All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
And some of my questions were answered at the sidewalk. Remind me again, please, and I don't know if you're the one about the driveway width?
It's twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two and that would fit both, so that's adequate because that's been a big rubber move.
And that's, again, that was a point of a lot of discussion. I think some members of the working group would have preferred probably as narrow as twenty. Fire department would have preferred it at twenty-four.
Why stop there?
At twenty-two.
Well, just because of the stone wall that we just.
At twenty-two, I was able to show that the apparatus and the turning movements could be better.
And what's the material of the parking lot surface?
It will be asphalt, although most of the curving will be concrete.
I'm just curious, can you compare the, I wouldn't go so far as to say the original, but the prior parking scheme when it was going to be a larger restaurant?
Well, I think the.
It's okay. We're good, good.
The main thing, Steve, was that this parking lot was over here.
So it was much larger.
It was much larger and it consumed more of the site and it really approached very close to St. Julius.
And then there was a second entrance here vehicular, which was.
There were two entrances?
Yes, and then that was something that we promised that we would avoid at all costs. And then that's when Tom came forward with these tranquility garden, peaceful space here that's a nice buffer, it's a transition.
So we're now roughly a hundred feet off the property line with that edge of the parking lot.
Which is great. Where was the herb garden that was once proposed?
It was in the, it was actually perched right up here like that.
Oh, yeah.
So instead of putting it there, so the parking lot was deeper in sight than here. So instead, you know, obviously we flipped it. But I'm going to talk about this whole edge here has a lot of topography. So this ledge, so it's about, you know, four to six feet higher up here than it is on the road. So it's quite interesting that, you know, the relationship of the site to the street is very flat and planar here and then all of a sudden this wall starts right there and it's not planar anymore. This is quite significantly higher out all the way down and it sort of culminates at this large ledge outcrop and then it drops down again. This is sort of planar here. So the interesting effect there is that you don't really have a sense of what's going on here on the street or vice versa. This feels like an isolated space. So even though this is a large parking lot, the presence on the street and it will be very minimal and in conjunction with the planning that we're proposing, I think it will really feel like it's a kind of hidden but highly functional parking zone. So it's almost as if the site could give that to us. Like Rob said, we struggled finding the, I mean, the most challenging part was kind of breaking through that wall. And Rob already talked about the amount of ledge removal that we're hoping will be, you know, easier, easy, but you know, there'll definitely be some ledge removal over here as it gets close to this and right here to kind of create a sort of lower gradual entrance in.
Ledge removal as a blastin?
Most likely. I mean, they, you know, I think the ledge will probably be fairly hard and would make me lean towards that contract will probably want to blast it. They can always chip it and, you know, takes forever and you're stuck with the noise forever.
And is there any concern that blasting of these burial structures?
They'll have to do a very in-depth survey before they do it and they will be spelled out in the contract specifications in terms of dealing with these storage structures.
So this apartment's total wall actually being removed?
Yes.
And?
Only a small portion right here and we're actually adding some right here.
I was going to ask what happens with those.
So it's almost a switcheroo. The stone that was here goes here. But for the most part, I would say that the stone wall remains intact in the character and the feeling, that whole edge remains intact, which I think is nice. It has a very rustic quality to it that is very characteristic of the town. Those stone revines from the fields when the tavern was built or other things.
So ready to move to landscaping, Rob?
Yes, sir.
EMI, just let me ask, Dave isn't here tonight. Did he have any comments on the plan?
No, Dave didn't have any comments on the plan for this. He was at the site visit, but he didn't have any issues.
Raise any concerns? Okay, great. So want to go to landscaping?
Yeah, please. EMI, can you pull up the first, for the record, I'm Wesley Work, so I'm the Collinsworth Associates in architecture.
That's great.
So I chose to present, we saw this plan before, but rather than an existing condition plan, I superimposed our illustrative plan on the existing condition just to get a sense of the whole site. And this answers the question of the wetlands. So here's wetland, one isolated wetland, here's another isolated wetland. This is that service road, that historic service road with these more beautiful stone walls on both sides. This is retaining the road and this is kind of retaining this portion above. A similar wall exists starting here, actually all the way along this property line, all the way along this property line, and it terminates about here. But you can see, and then in this new scheme, we're showing trees here, but this has changed since, and you'll see it in the drawings that follow. There's a kind of a nice connectivity here and one of the things that we've been thinking about in the future is that this, the rest of the parcel can have some use. Not exactly sure what it is, but it could be tied in with, so this is the rain garden and we designed that or have been thinking about that as a major sort of ecological feature that will pivot on this landscape pergola right here, which is an outdoor gathering space, which has a formal garden in front of it. So this pergola kind of serving the rustic woodland restoration, native bio-infiltration rain garden on one side and providing, and then this more formal tavern, what we're calling the tavern side wildflower garden on this side. And then this connectivity onto this old road as well as a pathway which sneaks down behind here from the pergola. You know, I think it would be wonderful if some future use could activate this space more, I don't know if it's boardwalks or some other creative uses, but we've designed this so that there's a nice gradient here. I think I propose a little additional tree cutting to kind of open up this road and make it habitable and inviting. And my father actually, in one of the earlier schemes, which I actually was doing most of the design for behind the scenes, we had a, some sort of landscape feature down here. So there was some little destination. So, I mean, who knows what will happen there, but we're thinking about that connectivity and I think that that's, you know, just looking at the site, this is about, I don't know, a quarter or a fifth of the whole site and we think maybe something interesting could happen at the next slide. So I was asked to do some bean counting, so we identified every single tree that is going to disappear here and I sort of part zoned this off. What is shaded in green is where there's no cutting. All of these red marks indicate trees being cut.
EMI, can you pull back those boards?
Yeah.
Where I show this red is where I think there may be some additional cutting beyond what Rob has suggested and this is that clearing of the service road that I talked about. This is, everything else was already indicated on the site preparation plan. And the reason, so the vegetation here is predominantly Norway maple. It's mixed with few sugar maples in some parts and some black locusts. That's really the cover. There are very few oaks. A lot of these trees are mislabeled as oaks, but they're actually Norway maples. And most of them, particularly those along the street, because of the ledge and because of the wires which run on this side of the street have been brutalized and they're, they have very poor form and probably not much in the future. So as much as I love trees, my instinct is to kind of wipe most of them clean along the street.
But the town center project is adding trees out of this.
Exactly, and we have those shown on the plan. So in total, there are about seventy-five trees being cut. I think about twenty of them are in the rain garden zone, which is this. There's about forty or so in, you know, in the main zone and then I think I added another dozen or so between here. Seventy-five, twelve, next slide. One of the things we did is look very hard at historic precedents when we were thinking about how we collect this building means in the town center and how to make it feel like a meaningful, historically appropriate and, so this is just an example of the fence we designed, but we really just ripped it off an old photo. So there are these, what I call a kind of pillow top here, which is a square granite post with a rounded top on one side only. So from one elevation you see the round, but on the other it's just straight. And what I call.
Mark's saying something dear to plants already.
Yeah, a line fence, which is just, so we have granite posts at all the major gate intersections, but the fence just runs with posts behind it. And you can see the character of the fences wrapping, and this was interesting too, to see the Elms on the main street and the Elms actually right up against the building. But I just wanted to kind of point out that, you know, and the other element that was really drive driven every design decision was sort of simplicity and simple elegance, just to try to not have anything that wasn't necessary and any detail that wasn't sort of base core on it. So this is our, what we're calling an illustrative plan and I think I'm going to talk to this plan most of the time and we can shoot ahead to other details. So I'd like to kind of speak about this in different zones and then talk about circulation. So this is the old tavern and is going to be office and other uses and this is the restaurant and the main restaurant entry sits right here. This is the part that I was talking about is kind of planar and it's a direct relationship with the street and our fence goes like this and like this, just like it did in the old picture. It doesn't go round, it squares up. This is a connection to the brand-new library parking spot right here and this was a lawn and based on some of the feedback we received on the planning board, we decided to actually add a pathway here. So there's this sort of spine that connects the library to the parking zone, to the tavern side gardens and beyond without ever having to go on the street. So as we were talking about before, there's a lot of connectivity and different options. One can also park, walk, go out to the sidewalk. One can also park, walk, go out to the sidewalk, continue and come in, which is how we originally thought. It seems a little counterintuitive, but I don't really think it's that much out of the way to do that. So there's, there's many ways in. These, these are, you know, each door has a kind of axial relationship that we maintain to the street. So this, again, there's a lot of ways through. And at each of these openings, it's two granite posts, line fence, granite post, granite post, line fence, granite post, line fence, granite post. So, so there'll be a very nice rhythm. And then where that last granite post is, that stone wall begins. This is the new wall right here. And this is the existing wall. And we're proposing a large sort of stately boulder salvaged from somewhere down here, which I'll pick out to sort of work as a, an end, an opening to the, to the wall. So it should be very, you know, lots of character, lots of gutsy stone sort of entry. I think Rob, you know, I think we understand how the parking lot works. This zone, as I said, is tavern side garden with a pergola structure, which I'll show a detail of later. The idea was also inspired by the stone. So the idea is that this pergola will be visible from the street and will be made of that native stone and will have a kind of feeling like it's been there for a long time. And it works like pivot point between the rain garden, which will be heavily planted. You know, we, we have a very elaborate plant list for the rain garden here below the pergola. The, sort of come back to the entry over here. This is a lawn, which is a nice gentle gradient. And this is a terrace for various events, waiting. There's a little spot with bench right here. Like a, you know, two six-foot benches so that people can sit here. This could be a dining terrace. It could be waiting to get into the restaurant. It's a, I think we figured it holds about fifteen tables, something like that. You know, we, and it could, the size could change, but it, you know, it would be a really nice kind of outdoor element, should the restaurant tour choose to do that. And, and the lawn sort of acts like a lawn terrace. And we, and, you know, again, back to the simplicity, up front here, we have, these, by the way, are the composed street trees and the sidewalk expansions. So the existing road is narrowing and there'll be a new plant bed here and existing sidewalk will stay here. So one, two, three, four, five, six new trees along that edge. Close. And you can see the location of the crosswalks right here. These are two existing sugar maples, which have been in and out of this scheme all along. They are probably about half of a tree and this one I noticed has a dead leader. So they're not looking too great, but they all do have scale. And perhaps it's the kind of thing that stays there for the next ten years and then gets switched out. But at least it won't feel like a complete decimation of the, of the site. So I think it probably makes sense to people, which is why we're showing them. We have, uh, we're proposing pin oaks to continue that rhythm across the ledge. And so, so there'll be some larger canopy trees. There is a existing Norway maple right here, which may or may not wanna stay. I think it should go, but if someone was really fond of it, it would stay. And then we have a, we, we're proposing an understory planting of dogwoods. That's, these are the smaller trees here that, that run the whole way, you know, here. Create a kind of pocket of trees here and then a, a pocket here. So these will be understory trees to the street trees. These will be understory trees and create a kind of gateway entry from the parking lot and also sort of separate the, the parking zone from the, from the more historic zone. And these will be understory here. And also provide a foil to the tavern side garden. We have a hedge of hydrangea around the garden on, on the corners, an optional hedge here. We have the same fence here and here that we're using here. So it's a repeat. And a large lawn bowl and a very sort of exuberant, you know, full season, always blooming flower garden on three, on, on both sides with four benches. And a fairly significant space here for, you know, with another opportunity for gathering. So between this paved zone and the lawn zone, there's a lot of space. The way the pergola is designed is a seat wall on three, you know, wrapping around with a gate, with a six-foot wide entry. So you could sit anywhere. And there's the, the eight posts with a series of cross pieces and there'll be vines growing on. And, and the pergola is sort of more embedded in the woodland rain garden zone than it is in the flower zone, but the face of it will be of the maples. We're proposing heirloom apples on this edge of the parking lot and some honey locusts in the, in the parking lot itself. More apples here. As I said, dogwood. There's some more utilitarian screening trees. So though, we haven't really talked much about this back terrace. So, this is a kind of courtyard terrace that, that is existing. And it's a slightly odd space because, well, well, let's not call it odd. It's actually a beautiful space. It's very intimate and, very intimate. And, but, but these buildings were all added in. And the height of the base board of each building is different. So trying to get the math to work on the terrace is quite difficult. So what we ended up doing is building a, a perched terrace with a vertical new stone edge that just holds it up about twelve inches, which allows it to be ADA, you know, ADA compliant out of this door so you can roll onto it. And this sort of sunken plant bed around the perimeter, like a moat for most. It's only about, it varies from eight inches to twelve inches.
Tables not bad?
Tables to eat at? Um, to be determined. I don't, yeah.
No, they've asked certain women's committee, they wanted to do certain, like a lunch out there or something, but they'd be taken away in the winter, but back before, depending on the time of day.
And we have screening because of the service zone here. We have some junipers, you know, red cedars here and here, and some boxwoods here. So that we're doing our very best to kind of create a green screen so that anyone sitting here would really be looking at the garbage. So when we talk about wayfinding, you know, another challenge was, so you, you park your car here, but you're going here, you know, it's, it's, you know, hundreds of feet. So how do you create a kind of natural progression that takes you there and doesn't feel awkward? So what we did is we, we brought the sidewalk out and we turned it. And we have a series of, of kind of language. We have a granite post with a light on it here. Same post and light here at this end, main entry, and at this entry. We didn't put it here because this door is not gonna be functioning. So we have it here, here, and here. So that kind of signals, you know, this is where you go. And, and then we have three granite posts with a little light here. So there's this sort of bank of light right there that collects you. So you can pull your car in around, you can get dropped off here and, and go park, or you could just park and walk to it. But it presents itself, and if you notice, this is where, you know, this is like the front door, but in a landscape sense. And this is the way you go. And, you know, often that, that's not very well executed in a lot of places. So I think proud that we put some thought into it. And, and then, as I said, four, a kind of small grove of dogwoods and some nice flowery planting. So this is one print, though, there's, you know, lots of perennial activity here. We're proposing a lot of perennial activity here, kind of a shady understory. And there's gonna be a little more perennial activity over here. The rest of it is very simple. So we have these three zones where we're, are gonna show off some plants. And they're contained and maintainable and garden clubs and different groups can sort of get into it and support that effort. But it's not dispersed throughout the whole site. The rest of the site is quite simple and ground covers and easy to maintain stuff. So, and then, then you just find your way in and then cross and then down, down in. Or you can go up a ramp here, which is inclined into this. Lighting? Can we flip?
Can I, can you translate the lighting page for me?
Is that a yellow? Is that a white? Why don't you go forward a little more? So I covered all of this. I don't think there's any, I mean, this is just a technical drawing that has all the same. Can, can you just go through one hundred times until we get, I wouldn't-
You can, you can.
Oh, does this, this is supposed to-
Yeah. Be pointed at the computer. There it is.
Yes, that one, right there. Eighteen? Yes. Okay. So this shows, sorry, I did that. There it is. Here's our site plan. So this shows the various type of light. Parking lot light. This is that post. It's an eight-foot high granite, ten-inch square granite post with a lantern here. This is actually the same lantern that's existing on the building.
He did a lot of research to find that.
This, this is a post, this is a mouse light, about the size of my hand, which sits on a four-foot high granite post as part of that wayfinding, you know, entry path. We have single lights in the parking lot and double lights to sort of have an effective, you know, as, as few posts as possible and the most effective distribution of light. We have these very thin, you know, tubular pathlights that sort of help you way, find your way in here along the path, but are very low, very quiet, should be sort of hidden in the plants. And then we have these, this is a border light, which is another pathlight, which can be used around this terrace, around this terrace and in the future. But these, these are sort of an unofficial part of the plan, but we're showing it as a possibility. And I think the, the photometrics for this lamp are, this is very similar to the photometrics for this. And I personally, but we were unable to get a, a formal study of this fixture. This is my preference, but I would, so I would propose that perhaps this could substitute for this, provided that the photometrics were compatible, which they are, as a, as a walkway lighting element. So the way the, the, the parking lot lights work, there are fourteen-foot posts, which you can see here. There's a six-foot or a five-foot person. There are two trees in each location. This is a double, single, 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 single. There is, uh, these are the little lights. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And then those are the mouse lights. That's this. There's a couple of pathlights over here. There's one here that takes you in this way. And then, and this is one of those post lights like this. That's it. The next page shows the photometrics.
Nothing on the oval? No lights on the oval?
Now, we have some, we have a conduit going out to the pergola. And so it's an option to light the pergola, but it was hard to really know whether or not that was appropriate to light at night. It might be nice as a sort of landscape feature to have some lights and you, so you just look at it. You didn't wanna do anything that could potentially create a scary moment in the park. So this shows foot candle on the ground. So, you know, under each light, we, you know, we're going for a sort of average of one. And we're, you know, we're, we're definitely pretty good along the whole parking lot. The, the lights we chose for the path, it's, and it's impossible to be honest, to tell you, you can see it in the printed drawings that it sent out, are definitely under one foot candle. There's about two foot candles at the, at the main en, at each entry, provided by that sort of tall post light. But then it drops. But I think that these, you know, will act like little beacons and allow one to very easily. The other thing we did is we took the town center improvement plan and we, we grabbed their lights. So you can see, you know, again, you can't read it, but I can tell you that there's about one foot candle right out here, coming from town. And, and the foot candles are added in. So if you have one here and half here, you end up with one and a half. So, okay. So I think, you know, my sense is that even if this is slightly under, I think that that's the right attitude and the right direction, rather than having very bright pathlights that are out of character and that don't really make sense. So we have a, you know, I think we still have enough. They'll, they'll sort of help with the wayfinding to move people to the door, but they won't, they'll really disappear. They'll just do the minimal amount that they need to. Do I have the next slide? Oh, I can do that. Oh, this shows the fourteen-foot lights.
I'll go back, huh? You were looking at the other? You were looking for the other time with the foot candles on it?
Oh, we were just looking at that. No, it's okay. I think, I think, I think we did what we needed.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so I can just quickly go through the rest of the lights. And then, those are architecture. I just wanna show a few construction details. I mean, we, we again have some very nice detail with granite, oh, pergola. So, so in a way, this could be a little larger. Yep. Perfect. So, plan, um, this is where you walk in through this gate and this is a seat wall elevation. This, this kind of looks like it's getting squashed. These proportions don't look right to me, but, there are four posts sitting atop an eighteen-inch seat wall with a cross, a continuous cross beam. It ends up being about thirty feet, thirty feet across, actually a little less, twenty-eight feet. And then there's four lateral elements, one, two, three, four, which you can see here. With a third layer. So it's a triple stack. Post, one cross, lateral, and then, and each member is reduced by, by a dimension, a select dimension. So that's the pergola.
What is the undulating line?
Oh, that's just showing, it's just labeling the piers. That's all. It's nothing. It's, it's just a label, a label tag.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought it was a chain.
Yeah.
Something nice.
Yeah, it is quite, it's quite an interesting line. Any reason for that is all.
Quiet on the pergola?
Yeah, we, well, so we had, we had proposed that the lights, if there, if there were lights, they would be embedded in the sort of upper structure. So you, again, they would be totally invisible and just shine down and create a sort of luminous space.
Really nice.
It could be very beautiful in there at night.
How large a wedding party do you get in there?
Well, like I said before, that, that sort of paved area in front of it, the area in it and that whole lawn area is significant. So you could have a pretty good batch out there.
And it will happen.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the photo op would be like, oof, off the charts.
Who will manage that, the restaurant?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah, the whole space is, um, we're gonna be the master tenant. And the restaurant would handle their own parking. They're gonna do their plowing. They're gonna do the servicing of the septic and the ancillary and all that typical stuff. And this area that Wesley's talking about, that would be a base building thing that people would be paying a fee to use if they did a function there. But we haven't gotten that far because we are looking for CBC funds right now. And CBC funds, there are certain things that are beyond the scope of what you can do in embellishments. So we will be doing fundraising for a lot of the things to complete the site plan. And when we get to that part.
So they'll be responsible for caring for the tranquility garden, the upkeep, the planting and all of that as well?
They'll be doing their own area. The restaurant will have a site vendor that'll be doing their own area, not necessarily the tranquility. This is all when we negotiate the lease. It's gonna be in the lease, how we're gonna handle it. I know that snow removal, trash removal and the basics right now, but, um-
Finding the tranquility garden sounds wonderful, but I'm just not sure who's gonna keep it up, weed and plant and all that other lovely stuff.
That's right. And that's gonna be part of the rents that come out of the building. And we don't know who the actual vendor will be. If it's something that the friends, if it's something that the friends, the base building pays for or not, but, um, that's something to be worked out, but it is a big detail. And we had talked to, um, to PBC and Jim had talked about, um, if we can afford a well. We would love to have a well for watering, because right now, that, the watering, wherever the well would end up, the watering for the plants, um, so we don't have a lot of things that pass away. And then that watering irrigation would go onto the wake too. So right now the wake doesn't have irrigation, it would be a well, and that could end up being, you were saying, around fifty to sixty thousand to do that whole, how does that sum to you?
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah, right now the town center does not have a well, is that correct?
The town center?
Does not have a well.
Correct.
Correct, so if they were to get a well, which is something I believe the planning board would prefer, I don't know, speaking of town here.
Yeah, we would prefer that too.
Then basically that could take care of all projects in the town center, including these two.
No, the sixty thousand would just be for this side.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying it come out of the town planning budget, the town center budget.
Oh, I would like that.
Yeah, I figured as much.
You could run it right over and then the irrigation would be done.
It would take care of the entire town center, so.
I like that, that would be wonderful.
That's something that might be suggested, recommended, asked for, whatever the right word is.
Right now though, that's a very critical point, because maintaining these sites, right now there's a hose out there at the old library and we've gotta get beyond that, the neck of the road to keep this nice.
Yeah. Certainly, yeah, I mean, all of these. Uh, all of these gardens will require irrigation for establishment period, and then they will not look so well if they're not irrigated. We can certainly, uh, we're using mostly native plants, so it'll survive better, but these flowery gardens will require irrigation, absolutely.
But again, that's one of those.
We're bumping up against an hour, which is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wes, you have a long ways to go.
I, no.
Quick question.
The planning around the pergola, I think you had a really good plan for that, that would be interesting just to sort of talk about for one minute.
Uh, sure.
Are you gonna have conduit going over to the pergola so that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we have a whole bank that runs along the base of the parking lot, and that would be where the electric car, uh, so, uh, just quick talk about materials, we have bluestone edge, that's that edge I was talking about, so this is a, a habitable space of the terrace and it drops down, and then there's a wall over here. We have bluestone, um, edging in some places around the terraces where, uh, we need an edge. Most of the walkways are bluestone with no edge, it's very simple pattern, pattern stock bluestone. We have flush granite curb and slope granite curb and transition curb details. Uh, planting details, plant lists. Um, planting around the pergola, and this is that, that connection that we, that I was talking about to the, and then there's a pathway that comes here, comes up and then over and into the pergola. So this gradient drops off a lot, so when you're standing here, it'll be almost like you're on the bow of the ship looking up. And then we have a very significant, uh, uh, I think, you know, some fifty or so trees, um, hundreds of shrubs, native shrubs, and wildflower, you know, native wildflower seed mixes. So I think that this, the opportunity to sort of create this wonderful native garden back here is really exciting.
What kind of trees?
Oh, we have, uh, um, beech, American beech, we have, uh, some oaks, we've got, um, red buds, dogwoods, oxydendron, sour wood.
So how will you, once those are mature, how will you still have that vista looking down?
Oh, because they, you'll see under. There will be a canopy tree, I mean, with, some of them are understory trees, but they won't be such a thing as understory that you can see.
So thinking about clematis, some are.
Exactly, some, we have some, some, uh, a very aggressive level of clematis and maybe some honeysuckle on the, um, on the pergola. Um, and, you know, I already talked about hydrangea, and this is that very flowery.
Okay, um, is it, is that round?
Have you done that? That's it?
Well, I just, we have a couple architectural plans I can run you through.
Okay, just let me see if anybody has questions for Wes. You guys?
Mine was mostly to do with, I was saying, is this a very ambitious garden and to establish, we see it takes so much hand labor and weeding until these plans get established, and I think that's, that's really a big point about who's gonna pay for this.
That's right.
That's right.
So.
Well, I did my best to, to, definitely thinking about that, and I did my best to create these discreet moments of garden where some entity could take control of it and pay for it and manage it. So.
We'd all like that entity.
We'd all like to find that great entity in the sky.
Of course.
Somebody's volunteered.
But, but, you know, rather than sort of have this dispersed, um, garden.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I expect you to have an answer right now, I'm just saying that there's certain major concerns.
Yeah.
But somebody has volunteered.
We volunteered, and so that's why the segue was to the well, to irrigate, because we don't wanna see it and then be dead, um, so.
I have one question about the gardening still. On the far western perimeter, I see where your areas stop, and then there's still a, the, the DMZ that was showing on the plans, it was sort of gray. What happens in that space?
So there's some very large trees, mostly them are Norway maples, and in deference to, uh, St. Helios, we've elected to let them stay.
So that will remain as it is in that home?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
That was when you look out from the sanctuary, nothing's changed.
Right, so these are, these are fifty, sixty, seventy-foot-tall trees, so there's a whole line of them which remain.
Because they weren't marked and on the colorful landscape plan it just sort of shows as plain gray, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, you have a few seconds?
No, I, I think we have more questions.
Sorry, you'll, you have more. Um, you're gonna have to unfortunately have some real signage, um, you're gonna have to have some real signage with lights and people who don't know what can come and park here, so you gonna talk about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we just go on the?
Building signage.
Okay. Uh, it's great that you keep in the mature trees, so not everything looks, that it grew up at the same time, I think that's great. If you do that in one or two other places, I don't really know where, please consider that. Um, there are the lindens across the street, at this point I don't know or believe the town planning center is using any. Maybe we can find a way of integrating them in there, or some of the elms that you pointed out before.
Yeah, the lindens here.
Right, but maybe, you pointed out some elms that were in front of the tavern in the old, old days, maybe that's a way of bringing them in. And whatever you're planting, you pointed about the wires, it's really well taken, anything you plant under the wires will be brutalized, that was a great term you used, again, so hopefully whatever we do.
The wires are coming down.
That's right, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm starting to water.
Everyone.
All right, all right.
It's all attack on the water.
That's why we, that's why we ought to start fresh.
Right.
We're not trying to.
So we can do it.
As old saying is to go, never mind.
Um, let's see. Um, any thought we could extend the fence around the, um, library, the innovation center? So that's a thought, I don't know what's left in their budget, but it's a great item, something we might wanna consider.
Yeah.
And cluster those two together.
Yeah, I mean, you could eliminate this section here and just let it go all the way around.
Go around, which would be great.
Yeah, we've been talking about that with Skipper.
Right, okay.
The only, he's, he's got a couple of concepts, you know, but, yeah, we've talked about it.
The only thing I would say there is that the character of the fence for that building would probably be slightly different than the character of the fence.
That's right, it's, it's nice a way that you sort of separate that.
Some sort of modulation of the style, but same fence.
Especially, yeah, especially at that corner, because that's very, the street takes over the, the lawn right there.
Two different characters in those two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't wanna.
You know, right, I hear you, I hear you. Um, the outside lighting, I assume in some way complements what the town center planning people are doing? Please color, finish, something?
So, oh, we've been, we've been considering the town plan every step of the way.
So there is some, there is some.
So all of the tree, all the trees.
She means fixtures, not just.
Light fixtures, please color and finish, if you can, I don't know, think you wanna.
Would those to be lost in the green area and not stylistically overstated?
Right, I'm talking about the tall ones.
Yeah, the tall ones, like around the town.
Fourteen feet.
If you've considered, I'm just rounding these things up, um, okay. It would be great, I don't know if you have done this or not, to see the tag group review the trees, et cetera. A tree advisory report for Wes, if you wanna run that past them as well.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I myself am hesitant about honey locusts, they are ubiquitous, they are considered, I believe, invasive in some states.
I think you're thinking about black locusts.
I'm not sure, so anyways, check with the tag group, because they just did a review, I thought that's what they had said about some honey locusts of the town center planning, um, planning, and that's it, thank you.
Jim, any thoughts on that? Sounds good, all positive, great. My only question is, you talked at the beginning, you thought about one sidewalk versus two, and why did you make that transition from one sidewalk to two? Just wanna understand that.
Uh, I don't under, I don't understand the question, where.
Oh, you were saying they'd leave the parking lot, they go up to the main sidewalk and come up and around, and you said, no, we wanted our own sidewalk.
Here, oh, or come up like this. Right, so, so we actually.
Yeah, you, why did you just use the street sidewalk where you establish your own, just to understand, I'm asking.
So originally, it, it, this, this segment of walkway, bluestone walkway did not exist.
Yes, right.
I added it for this man.
Yes, that's true.
So that's what I was, that's what I said.
Came up with the sidewalk.
No, no, I'm talking about more generally, the, the whole of the sidewalk, right, that's what you're just pointing to.
Yeah.
You said some people will come out of the parking lot, go all the way to the street sidewalk, come up, walk that, and then come down.
Yeah. Yes.
So was that ever considered as the primary way to come in?
No, because it's just all ADA compliant.
Okay.
That's, that's. Because that's the shortest road for the Italian.
Okay.
The whole challenge of the whole site plan was to keep away crisscrossing this whole site plan with ramps and railings.
Okay, got it.
We did consider it, we were trying to think of how, how we could get rid of this.
You got any time?
You said it.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of time.
But, but, but we ended up just thinking that, you know, I mean, how silly is it if you're trying to go here to go?
And we can guarantee those will be shovelled, we don't know about the town.
Right, okay. All right, okay. Move on?
Okay.
Adrian, you want someone?
I'm just gonna be really brief, because I know we're going over a little bit, but this is, um, Daniel wasn't able to be here, the architect, but I can run through the floor plans in there, but I'm just gonna go like this. You know that's the restaurant, that's the kitchen, that's a family dining room, that's a figure. Okay, that was, oh, factor, factor. Okay, let's just hold this one. Um, this is the restaurant, this is, the connector has the kitchen, these two are family dining rooms. This is, uh, women's community league, oh, no, that's, uh, historic society, women's community league in here, and then the second floor is the ballroom, which you all know about the ballroom, and then it's more forest and trail, this is the first room in the front, and then, um, two more women's community league and then the historic society. But getting to the building lighting, you all.
Put it on the tripod.
Oh, put it on the tripod, that's a good one. Well, I wanted to get close where they can see it.
One of the few links to the ends.
Okay, good. This is, um, basically the, some of the existing old lights, we're sending them out and the glass is gonna be sandblasted, so it's dark, sky compliant. And then, um, this is a barn light, which I wanted you to see, there's an old sign up here, and the barn light would be over the sign. We don't know yet what, how big or anything until we get the restaurant tour, and anything like that affixed to the building, you all will see it approved, and Historic New England will see it. Then we're gonna take this sign and redo it, um, there's a man in, um, outside of Newport in, or Providence, and he does all our marker signs for the historic commission, and he will redo this. This will be the little light that's on here, and, um, these are potential Norway lights, but Wesley found these today at Patty Brothers, so we might have some of those too around the building, and Historic New England seems to like all that, and I think that's about it. I don't wanna talk too long, we've already talked a lot.
I didn't ask for comments from the audience, any residents have any questions or comments?
Sure. Um, do you want us to say our names?
Yes, please.
Um, so, okay, shoplift, I just have a question, um, who's gonna pay the water bill for the irrigation?
Um, hold on, this is a municipal building, so, um.
Taxiderm?
Yeah, the town might, might be paying it, we don't know. Every, all the rents that come from all the tenants, we have, um, nonprofits which are getting greatly reduced rents, and the restaurant will go back to the town, and, um, the town probably, the town's going to charge for the liquor license, the town's gonna charge rent, and then there's a percentage rent. All that money will go back to a reserve replacement fund for the building to keep it up, and this building may not have to pay water, we just don't know yet. The restaurant itself will pay water.
The irrigation?
Um, I'm not sure about the irrigation, but the restaurant is a very high user of water.
I'm, I'm only interested in the irrigation.
Okay.
Because I, I think that, um, how many thousands of gallons will?
It's coming from a well, so there's no charge, we just, as we.
I love this, I love this a lot.
Huh? We just talked about adding a well.
Right, but we don't know if that's gonna be a dual or something we're gonna float.
Right, it's gonna be fundraising to do that, so, uh, to add the well.
Okay. So we might have a well, we might not have a well, is that kind of a?
Yeah, and it's really important for the fundraising to get the well, because that's going to be.
We, we, we have to find out, I mean, there's, it's a thought, a lot of people adopt it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that it's, it's pretty hard, you know, there's a lot of, um, private homeowners who go through, you know, scenic roads, don't build a big house, who are really burdened, especially residential C and D areas, by adding wells to, for irrigation, and to watch this giant complex go in with absolutely no idea, we have to fundraise for a well, really kind of flies in the face of the struggle of many of the taxpayers.
That's because CPC, CPC. CPC money won't pay for what's next to the church, you see what I mean?
No, I don't, I don't think you mean.
But I can, when we review the town center plans, we requested that they put a well into their plant.
Yeah.
I don't, this is the first time this has come to course, at this point I don't believe they have a well in the plan, I don't know the planning to add to it, I don't know if it's altered.
So they'll use MWR water to water this massive plant?
That's my understanding, but it's a, the planning board at the time specifically said, I'm gonna watch.
I'm gonna use MWR water, wait till we're not for the irrigation, so we're, we're committed to having the, find the funds to do the well on-site if we have to, it depends on what the town center.
If the town provides a well, you'll tap into that, you're committed to funding.
And I'm saying that the planning board did request the town center planning committee to put that in.
Okay, so it's consistent with, with what you're.
We're trying, right, we are consistent.
So we're not using MWR water for the irrigation system?
Yeah.
No, okay.
It was comparable well.
Just confirming, I wanted to.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much. That's good, you've had it for twenty-five years of work, Rob.
Yes. Kudos to all of you.
Yeah.
Wonderful plan, it's gonna be beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my shakes are.
Moving right along, it's eight fifty.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm exaggerating.
I.
So, yeah.
Okay, next item. Sandy Road right-of-way for tree removal.
Do you mind? So, yeah, this is, um, basically within the town center.
Okay.
There are two trees, yeah, two trees that need to come out for the town center improvement master plan. Uh, we've already looked at this plan, if you recall, that, um, decor last time, from A, we looked at the plans quite extensively, um, but we looked at those mostly like informational or comment sessions, we never had an actual hearing on the, the two trees within the right-of-way of Boston Post Road that they're planning to take out, so.
So are you the advocate in this game?
No, um, no, the town center planning committee is, and in this case, um, Sam and John McElloch here are brought.
Okay, great, come on up, guys.
John McElloch from Mitch Engineering.
Hi, John, welcome back.
And Sam Penaltine from the Nature Book Association.
Great, fantastic.
As in I mentioned, we, we presented the project before the board previously.
You got a recommendation from us on the project?
Right, and we thought we were all set, and then you might remind us once, uh, construction started on the project, that we didn't get a formal vote on the tree removal of this land, so.
Okay.
Based on a sidewalk, uh, me and Sam attended and evaluated the trees on the border and identified two, two living trees that would fall within the, uh, more.
And they're being removed, they need to be removed because?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to them.
So the, the two trees.
One pointer, you can.
Yeah. Easier for you. Um, this one here is an existing linden, and this one here is, uh, an existing dogwood. You can tell the scale of these two trees is very different, um, but the, the need for removal for this one is, it's actually kind of, kind of free, free reasons.
I'm just saying, excuse me, I'm, I'm just a little disoriented, there'll be a couple buildings so I can figure out where I am.
Yeah. Sure, sure.
There'll be a couple buildings so I can figure out where I am.
Okay. Yes, so, um...
The one on the left is the cemetery, right?
Right here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cemetery, yeah.
Thank you.
Cemetery here, walgreens here. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I just needed to...
Yeah, so this is, uh, you know, there's a memorial boulder and a large tree here. This is, uh, you know, many... I believe our survey might not have even picked this one up, it's very small. Uh, it's like a one or two inch, you know, caliper, uh, dogwood. Um, this is a much larger tree that, uh, what was the word from Wes?
Brutalized.
Brutalized.
Yeah, I can see the...
Um, you know, it's right under the power lines, and it's kind of splayed out like that. Uh, it's been cut, as I think you all know, dozens of times. Um, it's actually been pruned again since we did our drawings, we went out. And the, um, the tree, the arborist who's affiliated with the contract is, he's concerned that there's decay in the crown. Um, so there's also aesthetic reasons, obviously.
So there's health and aesthetic reasons to do it. Okay, and the other tree?
Uh, this tree, it's a, um... We're not planting any dogwoods in this, in the new town square, uh, which is, you know, the epicenter of the town center. Um, it's also in the way of the plan, and it's not of particular value to our knowledge. It's a very small tree.
Right.
We did mention that it's possible it could be transplanted, um, but we, you know, that's not in the bid documents due to its size, and contractors often shy away from transplanting a tree because of the warranty associated with that.
I see.
Do you know the actual type of dogwood? Is it a Florida or is it a Cusa?
Uh, I believe it's a Florida, but I'm not sure. We didn't verify that, yeah.
That's where the park is going, right, Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
Maybe want that at the park.
So, and again...
Collision with the plant.
Yeah, to put into context, you know, we're... The bid documents carry 101 tree plantings, so these are the two within the right of where they're being removed.
Right, right. And one, you're not planning on transplanting that dogwood, is that right?
Yeah, we're not. Yeah, I mean, it's, again, it's so small, it is still a tree, but it's... Some would call it shrub-sized, but the species is a tree.
Okay, now, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the one that's by the cemetery, because that's a significant... While it's been brutalized...
Right.
Um, it's a tree of significant size. What is going in its place there?
So along the cemetery frontage, I believe it's six oaks in a row here. Um, they will all be in a line, so we did originally look at keeping this and working it in, but it would actually throw off the spacing of the oaks and also the alignment. Because if you can see here, the gap between the curb and the sidewalk is something like two to three feet. Um, the new gap will be seven feet, um, so the new trees will all be in a line. So this whole section has new oak tree plantings.
The new small trees will all be in a line.
That's right.
So it's a great difference in size. And with the wires removed, you don't think that it will be able to regrow any unity up there?
Because it's lost its leader. Um, it essentially has, you know, four leaders now, uh, doesn't have a strong central leader. So even if we were to, say, match the species and plant lindens here, it'll never look the same because the tree has lost that. Uh, so it's out of scale, out of shape, out of alignment, kind of in every way with the new plants.
Well, my concern is less with uniformity than with maintaining a significant existing tree. So I don't care that it doesn't match these small ones that you're putting in, I'm concerned with its loss.
Sure. Um, so we definitely recognize, you know, the biomass value of a large tree. Um, it is, though its trunk is large, its leaf, uh, volume of leaf is not very large.
Because it's just been pruned. It's just been pruned, right, so...
Yeah.
You're punishing it for having just been pruned.
Right. Um, but the thing is, as this... Let's... The power lines will go away, and as that tree grows, uh, there's risk in a tree that has growing branches, you know, thickening branches, and no central leader, because it's most likely to split. So it can be an emerging hazard.
Can you put wires in it?
I... And hold the... Yeah. Yeah, I guess I would go back and ask a couple of things.
Sure.
Um, I understand that the tag group just moved some of the, um, trees here. And I guess I'm wondering, are... Is the planning board gonna have a chance to look at the planting plan in total? I don't know if we've ever done that, because it was, I think, in progress when we got it, and we were gonna look at it later on. And I thought that we would get that ability, because I think the tag group specifically said in their letter that they are not commenting on the historic or the locations of the trees. So I think, I guess, I'm trying to use this to take advantage of a question. I don't want you to answer it, because that's something, but I think it's something, I don't want this to be the final say-so we have on the trees of the planting in, on the town center.
So we can, of course, comment on it, we can take a look at it, we can give a comment.
Right, but I prefer to be paying attention to another...
But we don't, we don't have, regardless of what we say about these two trees, we don't really have a say necessarily in what the trees are gonna be. That is...
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's out of our jurisdiction.
And the Historic Society, and the Historic Commission?
I don't know.
Trees are not in there. However, this is a very sensitive spot, because it's immediately adjacent to the town's older cemetery. So it's a very sensitive spot.
It would be nice to maintain some of the historic character, what's on the green, which are linden trees, and I don't believe there are any new linden trees coming in, which is...
I am hesitant to sign off on that tree until all avenues of preservation are explored. Like to Diana's point of wiring or something that could keep that one alive. I'm not willing to sign off on it.
I don't believe that's really realistic. I've had these...
Really?
Yeah.
It doesn't work ever?
Uh, it's worked, except I had trees cabled to one big maple, and a dead leader, okay? Slowly, we had rot going right down, can't really see it from the outside. I then lost half of it, had it cabled back together. The cables eventually pull out, split, and the tree just went down completely this year. So, and that was a big maple, and I was not happy about losing it. But I just think this, we have a plan that's been approved by the town, the town planning center has come up with it, and they're trying to have some sort of continuity. And to me, this should go, and the dogwood, I am very familiar with, because the garden club water's there, and that should go.
That's not...
So, I just don't... That's just my opinion, I mean, do you guys wanna like, I'm gonna be speaking higher on this, but I just think it's...
I'm leaning towards supporting this, and this is my view. Steve? Back second position. But you guys...
Is there anyone...
I think so.
There's votes, okay.
Well, is it, if it's down to...
I mean, we just still vote on the decision.
Yeah, we have so...
So... But I think right now you would vote on, if anything, if it's coming down to a split, you would vote on whether to continue or to continue to have a decision at the next meeting.
Decide on a decision.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's any question on the dogwood, correct?
Yeah, I don't think the dogwood is...
Correct.
I think it's...
I think, I think it's the other one that, you know... I would like to keep it, and I'd like to give it a chance. Um, and I, whether it's gonna, whether that means it lasts another 20 years or another 10 years, I don't think it's gonna last 100, I think we can agree with that. You know, I, you can, with the planting of the cadence, you know, I'm pretty sure you can adjust that.
Leslie, you wanna make a motion?
Well, are we, are we more gonna vote tonight?
No, he's saying, suggesting, we either have a motion to continue or a motion to issue a decision.
All right. I move that we agree to remove the dogwood, but that we continue discussion on the...
Okay, let's separate him into two. The dogwood, let's make a decision.
Right. That's what I thought I just did.
I think we're gonna agree on the large tree. I disagree on the large tree.
Right, that's why I just said, let's breed, let's get rid of the, of the dogwood.
Yeah, I move that we...
Okay, so let's have a motion. Let's have a motion alone on the dogwood.
Someone's asking a question in New York.
I move that we...
Well, we're voting just on what we're gonna do at the next meeting, whether we're gonna continue or... Or are we gonna have a decision at the next meeting? Because we don't have a decision to vote on tonight.
Right, exactly.
So we're just, you know...
So, Sue has just made a motion to issue a decision at the next meeting on the dogwood. Do I hear a second?
A second. Wait, we can't do it tonight, we can't?
No, we can't issue a decision tonight.
For even the dogwood alone?
Okay, fine.
Yeah, because we usually, our typical process is to review a decision.
Right. Okay. Steve, second of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No, okay. Now, do you wanna make a motion?
Diana, have a hand up, did you...
Yeah, um, yeah, I just had a...
I think we're moving on, I think we've heard comments.
All right.
Did you have a motion on the large tree?
I move that we continue the discussion on the linden till next time, when we do a little bit more investigation. If there is a tree report out there that you have on it, love to see it. I'll go take a look myself. Um, I'm not an arborist, but between your tree report and the copy, Emy can distribute it, we can take a look. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
Yeah. Can't we, because we're gonna do some research between now and the next meeting, can't we also make a decision on the tree at the next meeting?
So you're continuing, that you voted for the continuance, is what you're doing.
Okay.
So, Leslie...
Call vote again.
All vote again.
You'd be voting for a decision at the next meeting, right?
I'm voting for a decision at the next meeting.
To review and issue a decision, I think is what Steve was...
He just wanted to defer the decision to the next meeting.
Right, which is, yes, which is, I think, what we're doing for the other tree as well.
No.
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 We made a decision, we're moving on.
He said we couldn't.
No, not... We're going to issue our decision. We're making a motion as to whether... Leslie's motion was to continue discussion on the large tree, which means next meeting comes on the 24th. I will, if, should Leslie's motion pass, I will not have a decision ready for you on the large tree. Otherwise, if the decision is to review and issue a decision on the large tree at the next meeting to remove it, then I would have that decision ready for you folks at the next meeting. And then you would finalize it then.
So one's MWRA water and one's well water?
Well, in that case, if it were to pass... Yeah, I probably would, because we have... Because we have...
Not existing.
Yeah. We probably...
So it has to be MWRA water?
Well, no, want to approve.
I'm not sure whether this was made.
Yeah.
I mean, for the large tree, you would have two decision options.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, Steve, you wanna hear more discussion on, just what I hear?
I guess we all do. I mean, what really matters is the final decision we make.
Yeah.
We're gonna make a decision now, but if they want to do some research and then make a decision later, fine.
That's what you wanna do. Okay, we don't have to vote, and I think we got it.
Okay.
All right, so that's pretty interesting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Culvert?
Culvert.
Culvert, sorry.
Culvert.
We have a much more pedestrian project than we have.
Oh, buddy, go ahead.
Literally pedestrian.
As an example of trees.
No, I didn't, it wasn't even meaning that. It's kind of related, gotta, we'll talk about that another time. Tonight, I have Lindsay Butler from Wright Pierce.
Yeah.
For the talk.
Pardon? Just introduce yourself.
Steve Flog, town engineer.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we need to replace this culvert, it's an aging failing culvert. And a culvert study was done at all Cherry Brook, and some decisions were made related to a number of crossings. This one in particular, for a variety of reasons, um, the size that's proposed, um, which Lindsay will get into. It supports, uh, supports the entire system regarding some of the decisions we might make in the future about the culvert at Concord Road, the culvert at Mar and Ave, et cetera. Future discussion that'll come back to this. By the way, this is, I guess, putting your flood, what, on the flood plan protection hats on. Tell that, this is, take it away.
Sure. Uh, so I'm Lindsay Butler with Wright Pierce, um, working with the town on this project. Um, so we're here to talk about the replacement of this culvert. This plan, you can see, this is the under-year flood plain here on one side and here on the other side. And this is Cherry Brook, flows, it's west to east, but here it's north to south, so I guess that would be... Real life, right? So, um, and this area upstream is a large wetland system that's just downstream of College Pond and College Pond. So the College Pond is what's upstream from here and regulates flow within this area. Downstream is a culvert crossing at Combe, we're going to... So the existing culvert structure that's here now is an old stone block culvert that has a three-foot height, or three-foot height by three and a half foot width. And we're proposing to replace it with a five-foot high by five-foot wide concrete box culvert that will be embedded in this concrete material. So it'll be set a little bit below the stream channel, will have the roughly equivalent opening size to match the existing culvert. So it will not change flood elevations through this area, we're not proposing any additional fill. The end walls will be roughly at the same location. There's an existing stone wall on the upstream side and an existing stone wall along the downstream side that pretty much run the length of the road and bank of the flood plain. So we're proposing to replace some segments, um, at the inlet and outlet, just to maybe the vicinity of the culvert itself. Um, this one, we're proposing a little bit longer of a length, because this segment of the wall doesn't seem to be in very good shape, and we're also proposing to shorten the culvert by a couple of feet and keep the structure itself a little bit wider. So in order to do that, we need to pull the stone wall, or the wall, end wall back a little bit on that end. I guess that's kind of pretty forward, you were there.
The project was heard by the conservation commission last night. Do you really have any major comments or questions they wanted to hear from Cambridge Watership, which we've now since heard from, that they also are fine with it? So I'd expect at the next ConCom meeting, they'll be issuing the order conditions.
Did I miss the trauma of the existing culvert?
No, I was expecting this.
Yeah, it's starting to collapse. You look inside, the stones are falling.
Okay, and that's something you can repair, just for my curiosity.
Pulling the road over.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we should also add too, this, this was originally part of the sidewalk project that was proposed here, and then it was taken out, and we did the overall Cherry Brook study to evaluate flooding in and out. It's going to be a rotation of each of the structures. So, this has considerations for the sidewalk project to be completed after this work is done. So in the ten, this will be done, and the roadway will be restored to match existing width through this segment that will be excavated. And then the sidewalk project will come in and the boardwalk, the sidewalk will run along that upstream side and it will be under the top of the proposed culvert. When we did the Cherry Brook study, that took in the whole watershed area that goes into this area?
Yes.
So this is being done according to that plan that was approved or reviewed by Water Management and the Concom, correct? Stormwater management. So this is, this is the size of, will that just another twenty years, thirty years, fifty years?
Seventy.
Okay, so this is long term, that was taken up.
Fourteen, sixteen.
Exactly.
Right. When, when they looked at this last time, the boardwalk and the stone wall were in conflict, if I remember correctly, exactly how that worked. I don't know where this fits with relationship to the boardwalk that go, that's going to be part of the sidewalk. Has that been worked out according to the comments that were made before?
The board, the designers for the sidewalk and boardwalk are still working on that plan to make sure it matches up.
So, anything we approved will be contingent upon work that's still ongoing, as far as where the, the stone wall goes back? The, what we would put back here would be at the same, it would match the existing elevation, and it would not extend any further out. So it wouldn't change anything from where the existing stone wall is. You'd be using the existing stones and you're using dry, they have come up with the same thing? Existing stones and the, and a dry lake process?
No.
Those areas? For that segment, we would not reuse the same stones. We actually are proposing to stockpile those stones and reuse them for stabilization on the banks. Some of the smaller ones can be reused in that area. And then the end wall will be a precast concrete panel. Why wouldn't we use the stones that are in the stone wall now that you'll see when you walk past in the boardwalk? You won't see them, they'll be under the boardwalk. That's, that's what concerns me, don't we want them on the stone wall? Am I missing something here?
What else?
Well, you're talking, maybe they're talking the culvert, not the stone wall, right?
The stone wall, right?
It's below you.
Yes.
Yeah, right, it's somewhere below you.
Right. So the boardwalk's going to be over the stone wall?
Right, right.
Doesn't it come up at some point for the same height? I believe it does after the cross, Cherry Brook.
At some point it has to, yeah.
Yes.
But that, is that a part of this project?
Possibly far outside of these limits.
I think that's a separate project.
Do you have a section we can look at? Of the stone wall, of which stone wall is regarded to what you've got?
The height.
The height or something? This stone, we don't have a profile view of the whole wall. This height here of the top of these end sections is at the same elevation as the stone walls on either side. I remembered, I thought I remembered the stone wall places very close to the culvert, being at sidewalk level. Do you have any photographs?
It's a photograph.
Yeah.
But I think these are mostly of the culvert, is the.
My only concern is that, if, if the, if, once you take all the leads out, which you're going to do, because you're going to be doing construction, is if that stone wall is basically up high yet, you know, it's, you'll see it.
It doesn't look like it.
It, no, see, the road, road runoff runs from the roadway off to the top of the stone walls and then down. All right, well, I'll have to go with your.
For the length of your work here?
Yes.
At some point, the stone wall's going to be beside you, right? On the sidewalk.
Oh, sure. Right, I'm just wondering where that comes. That's, I think, further down that way, down the street?
Yeah, right.
For the south, where the, where the elevation.
This particular work area off the shoulder of the road is up the theater, of the road shoulder, but it drops down significantly.
So you don't see that stone wall?
See that side?
Yeah, it's this one, right? You don't see this.
Right, but you don't, don't look at it. Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll, that's what it is, that's what it is.
Yeah.
All right, if it doesn't stick up, all right, if it doesn't stick up, if it doesn't stick up.
It's not so cool, but then.
It is beautiful.
Yeah.
It is. What's happening in that lovely piece of granite? Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure the dry quality garden can say that it can become property. It would be great if there were two stones in there that don't be there.
Probably the rocks.
There won't be lots. Yeah. That will be reused for the bank pieces, but, you know, I think that would be great if we do recycle the perp.
We just kind of know exactly where they go, you know, it's like, rather than, oh, yeah, we can move them someplace.
Put it in a pile somewhere.
Yeah.
Steve, any questions? All set, okay. Any questions from the audience, from residents? Okay, that's, we're good. The decision, 24th? 24th. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Fifteen Evergreen.
Fifteen Evergreen.
Yeah, this was just, yeah, you were there.
You were there.
You were there.
Yes, you were, your friend, you loved it.
Almost, almost, like, you were unobliged to get there.
You were impressed.
And that was down the.
Some built-in line. Yes.
You would be our friend if we could get this done in twenty minutes?
Fifteen Evergreen.
I'm, I'm really brief, so, anyway. Mark Cane, Jordan Julie Mensah, that's me. We bought the house a couple of years ago. Really liked being in Weston, like neighborhood. Done a lot of work to the house, whether it been their kitchen, or the backyard, a lot of landscaping. Like to do, currently got a two car garage, the house that I actually built in nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine. I want to get this one. So, the neighborhood consists of, it's Evergreen, which is off of Tyler and Oakdale, which are three streets off the Sherman Circle. Sherman Circle's developed in the early sixties. The Evergreen, Oakdale neighborhood has some houses from the thirties and the fours and the fifties. Interestingly, of the sixteen neighbors that we notified for the meeting, all but four of these houses have been redeveloped or developed during, since nineteen ninety-nine. One of the older houses is actually one of the bigger houses in the neighborhood. This one on Tyler, which is fifty-six hundred. Right back at Jordan Julie's house is seventeen Oakdale, that's fifty, fifty-eight hundred square feet. There's a forty-five, a lot of them around four thousand because of it, it's, it's an RV neighborhood, so ten percent gets around four thousand square feet. That's the neighborhood. So, Jordan and Julie would like a three car garage and a larger mudroom. So, Yon has become involved in the project.
My job, yes.
And, sorry to introduce you. And he's come up with a plan to increase the. We have plenty of room on the setbacks. So, what we want to do is, is come twelve feet closer to the street, pick up the third bay and five and a half feet toward the north property line. And that five and a half feet allows us to take five and a half feet from the garage and make the, make the mudroom larger.
Where is Evergreen Street?
It's off of Tyler.
No, where is it on the drive?
Right here. Right here, this is Evergreen, right here.
Your R D A bay number before and after?
With fifty-eight seventy-six after and with four thousand.
Yes, but which is ten percent of what's I, of twenty years ago, and the, the redefinition of spaces since. And so we now pick up the string porch, which twenty years ago was a camp. And our new number is, the old number is four thousand four hundred and fifteen, the new number is five thousand eight hundred and seventy-six.
Did you design the original house?
No, no, we just came in to add the addition, but what was adding to this work, which is, is the new master suite over there. And that's really the bulk of it, and I think we have some more.
Yeah, let's continue with the site.
Okay.
So, okay, so it is up there. So, the limit of work is, is here in the purple.
Excuse me, can you use a pointer so that both of us can see on the wall?
Hear that?
Look at your back.
Top button wall.
Ah, there we go. All right, so, this area here is, is where the new garage is going to come out. We're proposing to keep the entrance to the driveway, which I think is a benefit, because we're not going to disturb along the street. There's a fence here, there's some landscaping, there's some cobblestone here right now. It also allows us to keep this buffer area, as opposed to sliding the driveway closer to the north property line. We're going to connect the existing front walk straight out to the driveway. Right now, there's a plant, there's a light. There's a light right about in here, that has some plantings around it. That's going to be eliminated. We don't think we need another light, considering the, the addition of the driveway space right here. There's a birch tree right about here, I think, and that's going to be replaced in a new planting bed. The landscaping up against this north side of the property line, there's a lot of pine trees in here that, that hang over the fence, and over the years, it hasn't done well. There's some pine trees that the leaders have broken off, and it's just, doesn't, doesn't look well. Jordan's re-landscape the whole property, so we'd like to re-landscape this whole area here. It's going to be rhododendrons. There's another maple you're putting here, Doug?
Yeah, red maple.
So we're going to put a red maple down in this corner here. And then there's six giants along here. There's four up here across from, from the garage. And the pavement is increasing in order to allow access into this new garage. Adding this little area here. And we're proposing to put three cul-de-sacs under the driveway. There's a catch basin right here to pick up, to pick up the runoff. Property has a well. Pretty sure Evergreen doesn't have town water, that's why it was put there when I built the house.
The septic support takes a better.
The septic does. We're going to put in a, well, we're, we're not adding a bedroom.
I said a master suite.
I heard master.
It is, but the current master suite is going to become a laundry and an office. So we're going to use a D restriction, and we're going to stay in four bedrooms. There's no increase.
And then when these, how much are you increasing the impervious area of the driveway? Like, what, do you have an old?
A before and after?
Yeah.
It's basically the same, it's the same amount, it's five and a half feet along this section here. It's five and a half feet long.
You mean the increase?
The increase, that five and a half feet that will come.
But, but how long is that? Fifty feet times five and a half feet, is it ten feet?
I think it's.
It's reasonable to say, so if the addition is thirty-eight feet wide, you can see that here's turnout is maybe fifteen feet big or so. We're at approximately the fifties. But the five and a half feet, we'll pick, essentially the driveway is moving five and a half feet because of the addition coming out five and a half feet. We're not making the motorport deeper, we're sliding it over.
So you're increasing the support which of the house, and the purpose is still getting bigger.
Yes, and, and we're picking all that up with, and the existing house, actually, all the leaders are piped to a dry well that was built twenty years ago. And so, we got input from Dave Conway and, and Ema and Turner, and so we have, went ahead and designed a, a drainage structure to pick up more than just the impervious that we got.
Because it's still twenty years old. This dashed line is your old driveway. This is your new driveway.
It is, right in here, yes. I don't know, okay, yes, in here, okay? And it, and it comes in in a funny shape, because Jordan's having trouble getting into the garage. This is, this, this, this should have been pulled back out into here, because it's very difficult right now to get into the garage because of the way that's clipped. But, yeah, you're right, Ema, this line right here is the existing. And this, this one in here.
So they're, they're pulling down here. And it's kind of starting, the flare out is starting lower here, and then it's also increasing here down to the garage. Are we done with site?
I believe so.
Any questions?
Did we ever? Nobody exact now, will they, Sean?
I thought you were always concerned about somebody existing.
But I sort of kind of, well, I figured it's a lot, there's so much vegetation from the other law. Yeah, that, this didn't look like.
You have questions about calculations, has Dave run the calculations?
Yeah, Dave, Dave has no problem with this, he's, he's, yeah. Kim also said it is fine. She looked at it, both of them looked at it, and this is overall relatively small. Kind of way out. Dave talked to Peter about this, and he says, you know, there's really no issues.
But are we looking at the whole site? Because now that it's exceeding ten percent, do we need to look at the entire site?
Well, yeah, we look at the entire site, but not necessarily from a stormwater perspective. From, so from stormwater, basically, is.
Are we just on the stormwater right now?
Or, I thought we were, but, no.
Oh, okay, but, but the presentation is about everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And they already talked about changing the lights.
Yeah.
But like, all the other, all the other landscaping around the site is acceptable?
Well, landscaping is pretty good around the site.
It's really substantial, I, you know, Jordan's planted forty-seven, I think it's forty-seven pine trees around, around the back by the pool.
It's almost, the existing perimeter conditions is an ideal western planning, you know. Next, we have seventy foot, I can't remember. So we have seventy foot high evergreens up here, then it drops down. A lot of mature, very tall. Then Jordan has planted with Julie, a very robust Evergreen buffer around their swimming pool. So, here is a view from, sorry, this corner, looking this way. So when you look across the pool that's behind this fence, you have very mature plants. So, this is a perimeter condition. We're now looking up here at the left hand corner, you see these very tall trees coming down. And then we, when we look down to the right at the front, we're looking to the edge condition. These are the seventy foot evergreens.
So, I, basically, all I want to know is that, in the context of the neighborhood, adjacent houses across the street, all that, it, it fits in?
Yeah, it does. And part of it is that, the way it fits in is that the house looks the same, because there's a garage there, and we're extruding it out twelve feet. It's already, it starts about seven feet back, so it sticks maybe four or five feet in front of the garage, but it kind of, if you squint, you would know.
It's more, I'm more concerned about the landscaping than the addition.
Oh, no, it, 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 it's, it's beautiful, and the neighbors to the left of it have a, a very robust.
We actually can see it on the.
I think, are you done with that decision?
Yes.
Great. What about lighting? Did you talk much about lighting, either new lighting and the existing lighting? Because we've never taken a look at the lighting, by the way.
You want to switch to that board?
Is all the lighting dark black compliant?
Yes, so, interestingly, there wasn't very much lighting on it. Normally, we've done this period of the planning, or we do it in, or we take out anything that's not dark black compliant, we get it approved. And everything here is new light, we're actually decommissioning all floodlights.
Right. I figured Ema would have said that.
Yeah, and, and there, and there's actually a pretty limited amount of these lights. The lumen count is, I think, around twelve thousand in normal, which is way below your tolerance or vapor.
And the generator?
The generator, there's, the only issue with the generator, we need to install a sound deadening fence, which we've done before, generates to hold distance roughly fifty feet from property line. We're somewhere around sixty-five, to get it down to forty, we succeeded by putting a solid fence, we get it down to like thirty-five. So we're going to do that.
That's it, right.
That's just the back six, yeah.
Per zone of time, so I don't know. So that's it, yeah.
Perfect. Did you want to show us architecture, just real quick?
Please, thank you.
Wait a minute, nickel timer.
How about thirty seconds?
Okay, there we go, we got this.
Okay, so.
Do you want to start, the elevations?
Yeah, front, this is the new building that is in the same sort of footprint, but coming forward twelve feet is the existing. This is the left hand side unchanged. Next. As we look to the side elevation, three car garage, canopy, the master suite, a deck at the back. That deck is reflected here, again, from this point on. This is, this first floor here is existing, and there's an existing bathroom storage. And then from this point on is the new addition behind this existing structure there.
Great, perfect. Any questions? Steve?
No, nice.
Very nice. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll look at this July twenty-fourth as well. They can't hurt it. What does it mean, they can't hurt it?
Yep.
Coming for kids.
Thank you very much.
Do we have our little cheat sheets, our cheat sheet for the?
Here's the cheat sheet for it.
Okay, yeah, brown.
We're going to do this.
No, my friends, no.
I thought, I said.
No, I thought, I think I did.
You passed, who sent it around?
We sent it around, who sent it around?
Okay, you did, all right, great.
How many things I read? I saw it.
Outstanding.
Me? Oh, no.
Oh, you did.
Lurvy trans, it's like a camp for you.
Yeah, 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 I'm just a teacher, huh? Hello? My name is Bogesh, so.
Give us one second until, Ema, do you have that, Ema? It's okay to say no.
No, I don't think I do.
He said, he said it right.
Okay, so, introduce yourself.
My name is Bogesh, I'm a teacher for coming with kids. So, I basically teach from nine to five, every day. Week days, of course, and it just depends on, depending on the age, we teach on different skills. Our volunteer.
I got two.
I'm not sure.
We're listening.
Okay.
We're listening, I can't believe, but we are, nine to five, got it.
Yeah, nine to five. Then, that's a full day, but sometimes it'll be halvesay. And the kids choose whichever one they want, and they just sign up, and they do, but teach only during the full day, because one camp and another camp. And we normally, depending on the age, we do different things. Like, if you're like a preschooler or like a kindergartner, you can't, you can't, you can't do math. So teaching out of code is pretty tough for students. So instead, we play games that they don't realize is essentially coding principles. Like, and then also that we, also a good thing is the parents are happy that they learned something, you know? Send the kid, yeah, you're out of the house, really. And whereas when you go into like, actually, like, above eight, eight to thirteen, we teach you some basic, uh, how to do some coding onto scratch. Scratch is a MIT, uh, resource created by them, and we just teach them how to do it. There, it's all colored block, it's like blocks, so it's just like connecting blocks. It's very simple, they're in second grade, third grade, so we try to keep it fun for them. Now, when you go up another level and you're in middle slash high school, we actually, you know, remove all those blocks. We go back to those, uh, intimidating-looking brackets and parentheses, and we teach you like that. And right now, I'm teaching in Newton North, like three D game development, and none of them have any experience, and they're all seniors. So I'm, it's, it's very intense. But it, like, I keep it, I keep it fun, keep it a fun environment, because it's not school, it's a camp. So.
Great.
That's just a little background, I was just told to come here, answer some questions.
Great.
So did you really begin June twenty-fourth?
Uh, this is Regis, yes, I, I actually taught every Regis, uh, location, I taught June twenty-fourth, I'm teaching next week at Regis also. And, yeah, that, fun fact, on Regis, it was actually, out of those twenty kids, fifteen of them was part of a big Nigerian family. Like, they were all part of a scholarship program.
Nice.
And so I got the five oldest of them to teach, and they were all related. So you could, like, so they were a little, very competitive, is that, that's the right word to say. But they all learned something, they were super happy, they, you know, wrote those notes, they bought everyone pizza for reasons. They're nice, you know, I, I was happy, it was our first week of, uh, teaching, you know, I came in, followed the rubric every day. And then the last day, I was like, you know what, I just need to teach you how to, you know, make this fun for you guys.
Ema, on that, why is it in the past, the, the permit?
So I imagine this is because one that came to us late, they had started already.
Okay, got it.
And then we told them, you know, as, as it's happened before, I mean, we've had camps operate without a permit a year. We told them, get in at least now, and so they can start this year.
Okay.
Is twenty campers overall?
Uh, it is limited, eight per student, per instructor, so however many instructors there are in that camp, they'll be, like, they'll be capped off, basically. So for that twenty kids, there were three instructors. And each instructor does a specific camp, I taught scratch two.
So you're okay with a maximum of twenty-four, is what we're saying here?
Uh, because, I, I know there's a camp that's going to be happening with twenty-six kids, because that's going to be like four instructors.
Right.
Your, your application was for twenty-four, though, just.
Oh, this is starting, I'm sorry, I'm getting the trans. Regis will not have more than twenty.
Okay.
Regis will not have more than twenty. But normally, average is always ten, that twenty was a, was because of the big family, I got involved in sponsoring. So it's all ten, and it's.
Ema, all the drop-off pickup numbers are very.
Yes.
Citek setting.
Yep. Yeah, we still have a lot less this year in Regis because of, because of links and Braveheart, also Braveheart moved up, but a lot of it because of links.
Any other questions, guys?
No.
Okay, thanks very much for coming.
Oh, no, you guys are.
Four twenty-five isn't there anymore.
Oh, okay.
He puts.
Tommy, we should try to do that.
Okay.
Well, the reason I do it the way I do it is.
Let's move, let's just move on.
We'll talk, I'll talk to you about it.
Yeah, that's great, yeah. So one oh four Meadowbrook, new business.
So what we got on going on with one oh four Meadowbrook is two conditions we want to clarify. With one oh four Meadowbrook, one, if you recall this project is.
No, this is Dave's thing.
Yeah, it was right along the steep, it's right along a steep slope running to the wetlands. And I believe, uh, Leslie, you had suggested the condition that they have a conservation restriction in it.
This is right, the ones, this is the one that runs down to, does one have, is there a break out between them and Green Lane?
Yes.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. Um, so you had suggested a conservation restriction because the house was built fairly near to that, to that, wow, wetland setback line, it's fairly near to that slope. So one of the things they wanted to clarify is there are, uh, formal conservation restrictions which are accepted by Mass DEP and go to the Concom. And then there's, you know, a lesser level of language in the deed. My, my understanding of it was we were talking about language in the deed because we had never approached Concom with the idea of an actual restriction that they would take. So, one, we just wanted to clarify that that was indeed the intent of that condition and that, um, Jonathan has given us language this, um, he gave me this yesterday. Um, I forwarded it off to, to town council, but they haven't had a chance to take a full look at this. Nonetheless, I think we could say if town council approves it, we're okay with it, right, that it serves its purpose. Um, the other thing is, Dave had suggested a survey of Meadowbrook Road. Because Meadowbrook Road basically gets subject to a lot of damage and a lot of complaints through the course of construction. Uh, we did this similar with, uh, River School when they did their new field, and we did a survey along the length of Nunsahd Road. So I kind of took that as the template that, you know, the survey should be the length of Meadowbrook from the start of Meadowbrook at its intersection with, um, uh, with Wellesley to the subject property. Dave had actually thought of it as a much smaller scale, as, no, not the whole length. And I'm trying to remember, it was to Green to.
Capron.
Yeah, to Capron, yeah. And so, since it was Dave who suggested this condition, I'm perfectly fine with Dave's parameters of it. I wouldn't, you know, it was, that's where I thought they should always go.
So what do we, what do you want us to do tonight?
So, one, confirm, confirm that the condition, the deed restriction condition was indeed meant to be, um, you know, not a formal deed restriction to the Conservation Commission, but more so language that goes into their deed. And then the other thing is to actually, um.
Agree on the extent of the.
Uh, agree on the extent of the condition.
Let's try the easier one, the road survey. Are you, is he in agreement with you?
Yeah, you're in agreement with what I was saying.
We had the, the video survey.
Okay.
Of the Capron to, to Green Lane, so now the, so you basically have two or three letters upgrading, and then you have down towards Green Lane, you go past the David Beltrix house, then to Green Lane.
Okay.
If you get down to the area that.
Was most impacted.
Boy, there's going to be most impacted.
Yeah.
We felt that if we video surveyed the entire Meadowbrook, Meadowbrook area.
It's unfair.
It's unfair, because it's going to be ordered to say, how's this damage way up near the Gulf Coast, we can't.
You're going to be most opinionated.
Okay. Well, I guess because maybe I remember some things here.
Yeah.
One of the things that Dave was concerned about was that, um, water on Meadowbrook has been all over the place. Because people have been building, the building has gotten worse in various ones. If he, he's aware of that, he's the one who brought that up. So if he's satisfied with the extent of the video, then I assume that, that's fine.
That's true.
Isn't it a problem? Yeah, okay, so if Dave's okay with it, then.
You could actually see on the video, there's a low point in Meadowbrook Road.
Yep.
Where there's actually a bunch of sand, you can still, water coming down, bringing the sand to some of that.
Is there, is there some way we can take that information and give it to the towns there wherever they do work, et cetera? Or is that normally how it goes?
We have, we have the video.
Right, but I mean, I'm talking about stormwater management, DBW, I don't know, I mean, if there's, there is a problem, it's taking your good work and saying we don't, if we alert the town departments to these areas where there is.
We can, the issue with, with Meadowbrook and the rest, I mean, it's a trust, it's not maintained by the town.
Well, I, I, all I'm trying to say is if there's any way we can tell people, this is where the problem is, whether it's trust or something else, it would be good neighbor policy to do that.
Yeah, obviously, why not?
Stephen, too? Great, okay, item number one resolved. Item number two, Ema.
Item number two is that the language of this, of the deed restriction and that it is actually language that is put into their deed and not an actual executed, like, conservation restriction held by the Conservation Commission.
I don't quite understand the distinction, because if it's in their deed, it's in the deed, so.
So.
Restriction held by Concom would still be, would still run with the deed.
It still runs with the deed, in this case, what they're proposing isn't held by Concom.
And what, what's, what difference does it make to us?
Yeah, what's the difference for us, for our purposes?
So the difference to us, to our purposes, is Concom actually holds it, then they have like a legal right to that.
Enforce it.
Yeah, to, to enforce that. Concom doesn't necessarily always want to take on that responsibility, um, in a lot of cases. Um, for us, this really, what they're proposing here is to kind of forward the language of their limit of, of what we have in the limit work.
So what is the power to enforce this? So it's assigned to the deed, they don't do this, what happens?
It's, if I can, if I.
Are you a lawyer?
I am.
I'm a lawyer.
My name's Eric Olber, I'm from.
Hey, Eric, it's a lawyer.
That's you. So I, I, one of the issues is, one of the concerns is that in order to get a conservation easement, if it goes through the state administrative process, it's going to delay this pretty significantly. The, the, the concern about protecting the, the, what happens over the limit work issue is no different with the conservation easement than it would be with something like this. Because you could still have folks that are going to do something that ought not to be, um, allowed. And so the, the burden of going through the state administrative process really doesn't get you to the, to protecting what this board's concern is. So Jonathan's, Jonathan's feeling on this, or his thought on this was by taking the language directly out of, uh, out of.
Sisterhood decision.
And putting it, putting it into the deed, and then requiring as a, as a further condition of the passing of a new deed to have, uh, 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 an approval from the board or administrative approval from, um, the planner. So that when a deed passes to a new owner, that information, that information will.
So I review the deed every time.
We review things at the next checkpoint, that's the next checkpoint.
Yeah.
Right.
Which actually isn't a bad practice overall, I think.
Why would we do that for everything?
Yeah, I. Just a small loyalty for.
Couple of months back, we had brought up, because we can talk about how do you get the one month's note.
Yes.
The next.
So that's why. We're all in.
We all think this is.
If I can add one, one other.
You're sold.
No, no, he goes like fifteen minutes, get the all three minutes out.
Well, but I'm just to, just to, um.
Don't oversell.
No, 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 I'm not. Um, to the extent that you may be waiting for town council's approval of the language, the one concern I would have it is to avoid delaying the issuance of the building permit by another, you know, set of weeks or days to the next hearing. I would ask that, um, that, um, you allow the building permit to issue with the understanding on our part that, um, the permit may issue, but a certificate of occupancy will not issue unless and until this issue is resolved. Anticipating the town council won't have a problem, and that if it's, this, this scheme is acceptable to the board.
Very sensitive to that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it because we checked the deed anyway.
Okay, we, we, the only thing we've done in the past, we let it get to like the foundation, I don't remember if you, foundations then or not. The foundation gets you to that next level, I mean, the foundation and the review by council should be in the same time period.
So you guys have foundation already?
Foundation already?
Yeah.
All right, so then, whatever. I just hate to see you all the way down.
They, they go to the.
We're feeling trusting.
And, um, yeah, and I get nervous when we do this. I'd rather.
Finish frame?
Temporary condition.
I mean, the concern is that the, that we not wait another month, but you don't get a building permit.
So you can even say prior to issue of a temporary.
All right, even prior to issue of a temporary.
How do you not have a building permit before the foundation?
Because this, this, this was a restriction, we have a, we have a foundation permit.
Only other thing we can do is a completion upon frame, which would be about the same time period.
I think we'll have this resolved in our next meeting.
And as long as they couldn't, they even to, they can't even get a temporary.
And we.
Certificate of. That, that's such a big motivator, I can't even do that.
Because even when we've done the, the foundation.
A building opponent doesn't like it. And so then, so.
So this has to be resolved before you get a temporary.
All right, that makes sense.
I mean, you, I think.
Yes, we just want, I just want to make sure it's possible that, you know, as of tonight, we have the board's acceptance to a level where we can apply for a table permit without waiting for another cycle of the board's review.
I was happy and impressed that the applicant was willing to do this, and I think that's really good faith. And I think pre, pre this on that, you know, temporary certificate makes, makes sense.
Well, it'll be in your benefit when it's finalized.
Oh, yes.
Because I agree. Purely theoretically.
I agree, but, you know, lawyers, you know, coming, I think this is all in its own.
Okay, ready to move on? Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the legal counsel.
And one of all systems online, yeah.
Uh, Ema, did you pronounce it as a single file that we, did you end up?
Yes, I do.
Uh, we do have.
I completely agree.
Put that off in the next meeting, or in a period, talk about it tonight at a good time.
It's better to.
Okay.
I, I completely agree.
But the, the discussion really can be limited.
Okay, we're going to have a really quick discussion on it. Forty-sixth River?
So we want to start this.
Those two guys are still awake, very good.
Thanks for spending the extra time, we appreciate it. The other people had like twenty-five years of work into their projects, they didn't want to hurt them.
Okay, go ahead, folks.
You guys introduce yourselves.
We're the new, uh, local surveyor architect, um, purposes, you heard, forty-sixth River. So what we're proposing is there's an, there's an existing covered porch that falls underneath the roof envelope of the existing house. And we are proposing to enclose and make it habitable space. It's about approximately one hundred and seventy square feet. The current RGFA, the current, uh, living area is seven thousand nine hundred ninety-eight, so that'll bring us to, uh, the eighty-one sixty-eight total.
This is an amendment.
This is an amendment that we already reviewed.
We reviewed, okay, yeah. Okay.
Do you have any exterior?
I have exterior, we have, yes, we do. So basically, so the area that's shaded yellow is, is the area that's in question, essentially, and that's, that's existing. And then we also have some elevations of what it looks like currently, essentially, there's, um, one more. Essentially, you have some columns with railings in between, and we're proposing filling in between the columns.
So it goes back to the new one.
Total house. And the, the roof is solid, right?
Yes, it is.
And more being new exterior lights?
There are going to be exterior, there's a change in landscaping. Uh, no change in landscaping there is.
So the footprint isn't changing, it's just.
The footprint's not changing, it's just getting filled in. Uh, we, we're just part of the, uh, the initial.
It's an increased RGFA. It's going to be a living area?
Yes, it is.
Screens or windows?
It will be windows.
I mean, Google map picture, is this, um, on your beautiful gardens?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that'll be a lot of work replacing them.
I, I nursery most of them.
I know.
It was very expensive.
You're done with your presentation, just be safe. Any, any questions here?
No.
I asked my question.
Steve, I think you really have a question.
Okay, so this one could be a general approval, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
There's Donovan waiting.
If you get tired.
Okay, decisions, Ema. Oh, no, we have the zoning bylaw. Why don't you hand out the proposals?
Yep. Okay, so here is the latest.
Describe this in a minute, after you. Right, okay. Pass this out.
Well, what happened to sixty-three?
To what?
Sixty-three carved out. It's coming as a decision after this.
We're not that far ahead of fourteen places.
So option two is actually the only option.
Option two is, yeah, it's not the only option.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, so, Ema, why don't you explain it?
So basically, if you remember, um, when five Colchester came to us and they were proposing that one strip of land to take them off of the scenic road. So we did.
That was recently.
That was recently, that was.
You guys signed off, you were both, what?
You were.
Talking heads.
So let's focus on Steve, because Steve's maybe near to this.
Yeah, so Steve, you, um, Steven Sue, you guys just did the first part of the meeting for this, you guys were videoing it. So here, let me show you what it looks like here.
The spite strip, are you familiar with that concept?
Yeah.
I.
Okay, it's when someone has property on a scenic road, and they take a small strip and they, they had an A and R on it. And they said, we're going to actually establish that as another lot, right? Even though it's too small to build, so that their remaining property does not remain on a scenic road. And they don't have to go through scenic road.
Betsy Weir did it to us.
How does it not remain on?
Because. Because they, they created a new lot. Spite strip, it's called.
So it no longer, uh, butts the scenic road, it's no longer bounding on the scenic road, is the idea, that's a.
Oh, it's, it's along the scenic road, like where a sidewalk would be?
Yes, so they, they carve off this little piece.
They commit it as a sidewalk, that's great.
To cut off.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
And we had, we had no choice but to through it, say an R.
It's an A and R.
Well.
No, that's not the thing we can do, right?
And this, we recently signed one like this, because we had to.
Well, we didn't sign it, but they would get constructive approval.
It depalls to.
It's gonna give you all to an approval, if you don't sign it, so.
That's that modular home that landed on the.
It's an attempt to overturn scenic road.
Yeah, it's an attempt, so this is.
To overturn the meeting of zoning bylaw.
Yeah, so what we are doing here is we're looking at.
It's a loophole, Steve, and we're closing them.
Yeah, a loophole that we're closing. So we're looking to close the loophole, so the, the initial part of this process is you folks have to say, is to bring it to you folks and say, yes, we want to close this loophole, the formal part is then you refer, you refer to the selectmen for consideration of inclusion in the warrant, they refer it back to us for public hearing. So right now, we're at the first step where you say, yes, we want to refer this up to the selectmen for inclusion in.
This language is not necessarily final language.
That language is not necessarily final language, that's our first draft. It will likely, like most things, it evolves through the public hearing process, but it gets at the intent of what we're doing.
Yes, I think it's actually pretty good.
Okay, why don't you read out loud the underlined and explain that.
So, and first say why the buy right going away is going away.
So the buy right, the, the, sorry, the, the law as it is right now, the bylaw as it is right now says, it does say buy right on a lot unless the lot is located.
Let me explain real quick, so scenic road has three mentions basically in our bylaws, it defines what the scenic roads are, it has two applications of the scenic road, so you need to go, you need to do a search on where scenic road mentioned in the bylaws. This is the two meaningful places where it's mentioned and you have to, you have to make this modification, you have to close the loophole.
So are we making both of these modifications?
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah.
So if you read the underlined, I think you'll get it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so yeah, buy right isn't going away, it already says, not underlined as my buy right.
So it's the same wording for each, is it?
Yeah, so it's just basically saying what bounding on is.
Right.
I think it's good.
I think it's good.
You did a good job, the council did a good job, this is the lawyer's touch up of our.
This is, yeah, basically.
Will we add the bottom of this?
Yeah, I would make a motion to refer to the.
Steve, tell us when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, Leslie?
I'm very good. I move that we approve this, the two changes to the scenic road bylaw.
So we're not making changes.
We're not making.
That we refer to the selectmen.
Correct.
For their consideration for inclusion in the town meeting warrant.
Correct.
Second.
These changes as noted.
Can I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Can this go to them for the next meeting?
No, we're gonna, we'll hold a public hearing, but we'll, I'm gonna notice a public hearing like.
Smash volleyball.
Right, but it can't, it doesn't go to selectmen first?
Yeah, it'll go to their next meeting.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, yes, correct.
That's why I'm asking about it. And that's my concern.
Could be either shot there.
Yes.
No, for you.
I feel like it's sad.
They're all, they're all.
That was Leslie.
There's always, always someone trying to.
He might be self doubt getting it off to one.
Loophole, that's all you have to say.
That's all you have to say.
I knew that was the magic word.
Let's see, what the back of the meeting was different?
My goal.
Well, he's looking, it's complicated. Oh, Lisa, oh yeah, I guess you.
I don't think, I don't think people look at it now. Did you have any changes to this first decision? Smash volleyball?
No.
Yes. Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead. They're very minor, on page three, item ten, limit flare, since there are no nighttime
operations proposed for this project, I would think that rather than it being a, compliant with conditions, because a C would be missing if you have a number six, it should just be N A with no number there.
Okay.
Because then if you go to page six, I would just delete item six, because why say for overnight camps nighttime operations shall conclude by ten when this says that there are no nighttime operation? Unless you always do it this way.
Well, we all, it's a standard condition, basically.
So you always do it this way, even if there are no nighttime?
Even if there are no.
Alright, then this, then the only change I would make, would I make that a C C?
Okay, okay. Moving on, ninety Wellsley?
Wait, we need to.
Oh, sorry.
I move we approve the subject of action for permit for day cap, smash the volleyball at the Rivers School, as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on, ninety Wellsley?
I gave my comments already, did you mind?
Yep, and I've gone through a few versions of that.
Good, if you could read that for everyone's sake, I think that's very significant.
Yeah. So the thing to look at here is, I'm sorry, this is both cart path and ninety Wellsley state hall together.
Give you your authority.
Yeah, yeah.
Yay, thank you, you appreciate that. I'm not blind as much.
So this is where we, most of the language changes in here was put into the, what is it, fourth paragraph down after the listing of the drawings? Which is the wall's location and visibility make it an important contributor to Weston's unique character. Land State Farm, and we've, I've corrected that to what it actually should be. Land State.
Which is very tricky.
Yeah, as part of the Case Corner National Registered Historic District of Weston, the land itself was the Case Sisters Farm. The school's community center, case house and library, the Case Corner area acts as a de facto second civic center of the town. The geographic center of town marked by the case holders on the case campus across the street from Land State. The wall is prominent at the intersection of three scenic roads, Wellsley, Newton and Ash. Given these historic and scenic considerations, the board is concerned about the overall length of wall proposed to remove for both utilities and driveway.
It's Case's Corner, that's what I wrote to you, Emma.
You, okay, you wrote that?
Yes, Case's Corner. It's Case Estate, but it is Case's Corner, National Registered Historic District. Sorry, just a little correction, just a little thing.
And you've got my little thing.
Has everyone read it?
Yeah, I got your thing, yeah.
Yeah, my thing was in there.
Have you?
I'm trying to find it now.
Steve has comments?
I, I just have typos and punctuation, so I won't go over those, but one of them does change what it says, but I think it's correct. On the last sentence of the first page, the applicant responded that they would attempt to trench but could not guarantee that the wall was structurally settled out.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking at an older.
I already caught that.
Oh, I'm looking at an older version, I guess.
Yes.
Alright.
Oh, okay, this is.
That's the one you sent.
That's the one I sent, yeah, so Sue sent me back that version.
But there are other.
I just wanted to correct that.
All yours.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to send you?
I did read this thing.
Corrections ahead of time, I thought we're supposed to discuss them here.
We are.
So, yeah, we're supposed to discuss them here.
But if you, if they get them early enough, I fear.
But that's why they send them to us early, I thought so.
And you're already reading a different version, he's right.
I thought the whole idea is that we read them on our own, but we discuss them together.
Discuss substantive changes together, yes.
Yeah, like a not changing.
Yeah.
Okay. We need to vote.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I move that we approve the scenic road permit for ninety Wellsley Street with the modifications covered.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous. Sixty-three Cart Path?
Well, no, no, I don't think he was.
Well, maybe in the future then you should underline all the changes.
Because otherwise.
In the future, should we just underline all the changes?
Well, what happened there, just let's stop, what happened there, why is he looking at a different version? Why did he get a different version than Sue was looking at?
Well, Sue got this earlier version as well, but then she sent her comments to.
Yeah.
He made the changes and just handed them out.
You sent it, oh, what you just sent, what you just printed out with the modified version.
Was the modified version with, with people's changes put in.
And I'm looking at the versions he sent us.
Okay, so.
Print that out?
Yeah, I printed it out.
Yeah, so I should, I should have, I should have underlined the changes in there.
Okay, like.
In R, so.
Bad idea, we gotta hand it out again. Sent a, print out with a revision zone.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, no, I did that on the other one, so I should have done that on this one too. Okay.
So this sixty-three cart path is incredible, incredibly confusing, or I may be confused, because is a new house at sixty-three Cart Path or is a new house at thirty-one Green Lane?
The house is at sixty-three Cart Path.
The new house?
There's no new house.
There's no new house.
There's just a new lot.
There's a new lot, yeah.
But then why would you say for a new house at sixty-three Cart Path? Then this is about a new lot at thirty-one Green Lane.
What are you talking about for a new house at sixty-three?
Well, the very first paragraph, the starters.
Oh, okay, because that's referring to the original COA. Because it's a.
Two thousand and two.
That's just got out of.
Yeah.
Alright, got that.
Maybe you put a parentheses or a dash to make it clear.
Dash where?
Between two thousand and two and four, dated two thousand, two thousand and two dash for a new house at sixty-three Cart Path.
Okay.
Maybe that would help.
But then in the, in the fifth, in the paragraph right after the bullet?
Yeah.
You say at the end, you say four thousand six hundred fourteen square feet were being transferred from thirty-one Green Lane, isn't it being transferred from sixty-three Cart Path to thirty-one Green Lane? Because that's the new lot?
No, the new lot is twenty-five Green Lane.
Twenty-five, what the hell is thirty-one Green Lane?
Thirty-one Green Lane is part of this because twenty-five wouldn't have sufficient frontage.
This is just.
I was counting.
Well, it's basically, he, sixty-three Cart Path Road and what's the one on the right? The long, the hourglass one, which one is it?
This, this is twenty-five, this would become twenty-five Green Lane again.
Twenty-five and Green Lane and sixty-three Cart Path Road were originally two separate lots. He bought it, he joined them and he built his big house. Now he wants to basically make it easier to sell, so he is reestablishing the fact that those are two lots, he's changing where the actual lot line was. And he's also in, because he needs more frontage back on sixty-three Green Lane, he's taking some from the corner lot and putting it into the hourglass lot. So he's, 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 yeah, I don't wanna use the word Jerry Manning, but he's, he's making it.
So it's now three lots, it was two.
It was two, now it's three.
But that's because he bought the other property afterwards.
So would be transferred from thirty-one Green Lane to the new lot at twenty-five?
At twenty-five Green Lane.
Green Lane, I think you need to add that.
Okay.
At twenty-five Green Lane. To provide sufficient. And then in the next paragraph, the removal of new lot oversight or just the removal of the new lot and the buffer it provides?
Oh, okay. Actually, okay, the removal of oversight of the new lot.
Removal oversight.
Of the new lot.
So you're saying that it's.
It's not actually the removal of the oversight of the new lot that bothers us, it's that there was no buffer remaining.
Well.
I think you, we didn't upset because like we don't have oversight, that's.
I think, well, yes, because we used to have oversight over the whole co joining property, now we don't and I personally think that's unfortunate.
But how do we know that the oversight?
That wasn't the main concern that we had.
But when we were standing there, we were talking about septic and buffer.
It was the buffer, it wasn't like, we're not upset just because we don't have oversight of a lot.
Well, I think it was originally.
Wait, can I ask a fundamental question? The new lot is, is lot three, right?
There are.
Lot three is a new lot.
Yes.
Why are, how do we know that we're never gonna have oversight of that? What if they build a house that's greater than ten percent?
They do, yeah.
But under this division.
Yeah. So. But at the moment, we have, you, we have oversight over this whole thing.
Piece of property, yeah.
Yeah. I just don't, I really don't like the attitude that we're concerned that we don't have oversight of something.
There is that.
Either, either we do or we don't have oversight, I'm not concerned that we don't have oversight of something.
And we'll have oversight if it's more than ten percent.
Right.
Yeah. But the concern that at least I had was that the buffer was gone.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
The buffering, that, the, over, the lot that we did oversee didn't have, just disappeared.
Right.
So that's why they had to come up with a new.
Right, that's why they had to draw the line to include the buffering.
Because we're gonna leave it up to the other lot that we may not have oversight.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I think the oversight question came down to, is that you couldn't, you didn't want to leave it up to this lot to buffer.
We had no oversight over the buffering of the other lot.
Of the other lot, yeah.
Until they added.
Until, if and when they came up, if they triggered.
But the buffering we're talking about is a buffering between the, the two lots or between the street and the lot?
Which is going to be.
The two lots.
The two lots.
Yeah, see, I'm also concerned that the, whatever, whatever, okay, it's fine.
No, I see what you mean, because we won't have any, we can't ask them to buffer front, the movement front.
Well, they, they have that, they have that.
Thousands of times that we don't have oversight.
Right, but originally they did, they did a gorgeous planning job on, on Green Lane before that whole area. Now anybody, and that was far into what was put in because it was all under site plan approval.
Yeah.
Now that it's no longer under site plan approval, that beautiful buffering that was there to maintain the, the, the woodsy feeling of Green Lane, is, is.
In jeopardy.
Fragile, exactly, it's in jeopardy, so that's why I'm concerned.
But we didn't address that, we can't address that concern.
No, but we just, it was a concern that we talked about.
But then there's two different concerns. It's that the buffering disappeared from.
Can we not?
So I would say that.
Can we not just say both buffering?
Pretend.
But then they, they agreed to add the buffering to their lot rather than.
They changed the lot. Yeah. And they changed the property, changed the property line.
Right.
To assume the buffering.
Yeah.
Is what they did.
Yeah.
So that made us happy enough to be willing to approve this.
So, Russell, then we should say is that.
It's not a big, it's not our business.
Remove, creation, creation of the second lot, remove any buffering, took away any buffering to the sec, to the remaining sixty-three cart path? Okay.
So then as of the last time we met, when Sue and I weren't here, so all concerns have now gone away, everything's hunky dory. With the, with the house on the new lot.
Yes.
Leslie?
Any, any other comments?
I have a housekeeping question, just in the bold print on number one there, that prior to endorsement of the A and R thing, what does that mean?
So that means signing the plan that divides these lots up.
So when they sign it, that's called an endorsement of the property?
Yes, yes, correct.
So you're done?
Yeah.
So you're done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, I move we approve this here, we said plan approval amendment to sixty-three, why, so to amend to sixty-three cart path?
Yeah.
As corrected and amended.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? unanimous. Minutes?
Once. Minutes, I read February sixth and they're good, I gave one small break to you, Mike, taking care of it.
Okay.
I would highly recommend that someone look over it for it.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from February sixth with.
The amendments.
Yeah, with.
With changes.
With Susan Evans.
My second, but I'm abstaining.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four. One abstaining.
We're abstaining.
Tom Connor report?
Tom Connor report, okay.
Very short.
It is short because we don't have any site visits scheduled up until the next, up until their meeting on the twenty-fourth. If anybody's interested, there is a ride by M V P C along the Mass Central rail trail.
Wait a minute, does that mean we don't have one forty-nine Hubbard?
Forty-nine Hubbard, forty-nine Hubbard, I think only you were going on, Sue.
Oh, okay.
And I'm waiting for confirmation on that, that, that is still going on, the applicants may withdraw.
Thank you.
And long range plans, we are working on getting the finalized proposal for our traffic and congestion. Our traffic survey that Tony and I have been working on to look at commuter habits in the town where we could best affect some kind of pilot shuttle service. We have also looked into that, that Route twenty shuttle that's been going on, Leslie. That is run by Metro West Regional Transportation Authority, and there are some entanglements with getting involved, getting a stop there that need further exploration, is basically the best I can put it right now.
Can we whack like the Nordian knot?
Maybe, we might be able to, and.
Okay, fingers crossed.
It, but it's, you know, I, I won't.
Okay, we.
I won't go too deep into the metaphor.
All right.
The last thing. Seven fifty-one Boston Post Road, they had a hearing on Monday, it's now continued to August twelfth. Five eighteen South Avenue submitted their plan, their application for comprehensive permit on July second. So they are now officially in the queue.
So when do we, have, we haven't seen five eighteen South.
We have seen it once.
Right, but we haven't seen it since.
We have not seen it since.
Since it became small.
We see it as a part of the comprehensive permit process.
And that's for which number of units?
That's the two hundred seventy-five one.
And initially it was how big?
Two hundred seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, yeah, that they've come in.
Any particular reason why it got continued?
What's that?
Any particular reason why it was continued to the next one?
To the twelfth?
Yes.
Basically because they didn't get through, they only got through hearing from consultants at that, at that meeting and felt that they didn't have enough information on civil engineering and landscape in particular, that they wanted a second round of.
Was there anything else on the agenda or was that the five or that was?
That was it, that was the only thing on the agenda.
Any other question? Do you have?
Yeah, for five eighteen South, or just in general, is there any Powell letter that we know of that's not been granted when a, a project's been, you know, requesting one or submitted?
I know of two in the whole history of mass housing, but there may be more.
Where, two and where were they?
Oh, I don't remember the town, sorry.
How long ago was that?
Oh, I remember them being maybe five or ten years ago, something like that, in a way distant, or not. But I'm, I'm, I'm.
I mean, they're pretty much.
Where are they at, so I wouldn't know for sure, I, I know of none in Weston, none of the surrounding community.
Not a very substantial milestone, in other words, they pretty much always give them, except for twice, five or ten years ago.
I think rubber stamping would probably be an apt term.
And then the next thing coming up that's big is another round of true removal by Eversource. We'll hear from them next meeting, these are the roads they're going on. I specifically left the number of trees and types off of that because I don't want to get into substantive discussion of it, but I do want to start a scheduling discussion because last time Tony, Nina and I did a lot of sidewalks, I think we did like six or so around town.
Six full days, is that what it's?
Yeah, it was, it was.
Six half days.
Six, six mornings, yeah, basically, you know, before we got too hot out there, but if we're going to hear this and.
We should limit it to one or two people because you get a rhythm show.
Yeah, exactly, so I'd like to know, you know, who's, who's available to do this, they don't have to be Tuesdays, you know, Tuesdays don't work best for me because this isn't something we're doing with consultants. This is just something we schedule, you know, as we can. Some of you are fairly closer on some of these scenic roads, so you may want to be involved in those.
I'll put my name in the hat, so.
Okay.
What, except is this over the summer now, this is now kind of going, ongoing now?
So they're, they're doing trimming right now?
Right.
Removals they, they need approval from us. So next meeting, we're just going to kind of set up the, you know, set up the, the process with them and who can go. But I wanted, you know, to start getting, thinking about who could be, you know, wanting to do these.
I can only do anything I can write with Nina.
Okay, okay.
Do we, do we have a purview over trimming or just removal?
Just removals.
And only on scenic roads?
And only on scenic roads, correct.
That's a brilliant, we had to list the streets.
Trimming guidelines to us.
Um, we had talked.
They promised to give us trimming.
Yeah, we had talked about that with, with Chris and Nina, they were going to, he was going to give us a copy of his.
I'm gonna do that in the next meeting.
Do a draft, okay, yeah.
Nina's a well prepared person, so you should take care of she's.
Oh, yeah, um.
It's, uh, thankfully, it's Lori Hess.
Yeah.
She's as good as Nina?
Yes.
She's good, we walked on, um.
Yes.
Ashley, whether she's.
Yeah.
I'm available.
Okay.
So we'll tag team, Leslie and I.
Okay, we'll tag, okay, all right, um, yeah, so I, I, I know we're in form, we're not meeting over August, but I'd like to get these done through August if possible, so we're not taking it up.
Check our, okay, busy, yeah, yeah.
Okay.